Six third. Call this meeting of the Manchester by the Sea Select Board to order Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Answers, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. This meeting is being recorded. Thank you. I'm trying to avoid open meeting walk. The first item on our agenda as always is public comments on non agenda items. Is there anyone in the room who has a public comment on a non agenda? Is there anyone? The chairman's report. Um, is a commendation to the first, the fire department. Who, who had 12 members go to help. Middleton during the fires in October, October and November. Starting with, with the chief. Jake Neely, Captain Robert, Robert Cavender, Lieutenant Jonathan Happel, Lieutenant Kennedy Crosby, firefighter Eric Junker. I'm sorry, I'm ruining anybody's name. Um, firefighter William Kenyon. Um, Shane firefighter Shane Stevenson firefighter Mike Going firefighter Philip C. Kayla. Firefighter Richard Curran firefighter Sarah King firefighter Joseph Sanfilico. The mutual aid between the fire departments on, on the North Shore is critical to the safety of all of us, and I would like everyone to give a hand to the firefighters who. I would also like to mention that um, in this past week, our police and, and fire slash ambulance. Um, dealt with one of the most serious crimes I have heard of in Manchester in many, many years. And they broke up a kidnapping. Everyone was safe afterward. Um, it was, it was a spousal kidnapping and a small child was retrieved and. So all of you who were involved in, in sorting out that unfortunate incident, thank you very much. Why don't we go ahead? What was probably action items until we have done this signing in. Sure.
So, so. Again, thank you everyone for coming tonight. Um, this is a momentous occasion in an officer's career. I think I've said this before. So tonight we're here to swear an officer Kevin David as our newest full time police officer. Even though these ceremonies are short, but like I said, they're important in an officer's career and recognizes the officer as he starts his career for the town. So since May of 2021, Officer David has served the town as a reserve police officer and he comes very highly recommended from other agencies. Officer Dave is a graduate of Triton Regional High School in 2016. Currently holds a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice with a minor in psychology from Westfield State University. And he comes to us as a fully certified police officer through the post commission, which was recently established in 2020 and through the, the mutual police training conference Bridge Academy. So at this time, I'd like to ask Christine Dixon, a new town clerk to come up and Kevin's officer David to come up in the center for the official oath of office.
I Kevin David do solemnly swear.
I Kevin David do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duty incumbent on me.
As a police officer for the town of Manchester by the Sea.
As a police officer of the town of Manchester by the Sea.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
In accordance with the bylaws.
In accordance with the bylaws.
The town of Manchester by the Sea.
Of the town of Manchester by the Sea.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
The laws of the Commonwealth.
And the constitution of the United States.
And the constitution of the United States.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Now I'd like to ask Kevin's mom to come up and do the official ceremony pending of the police officer's badge. Blackboard allowing us to take a few minutes if you're regular meeting, but it's a ceremony.
Thank you. Moment or two. Is there anything on the, the action items are a list of things that we have agreed to discuss at some time in the future. You are starting by going over to make sure that we're touching on the things that we would read to and that, and add things that we think we need to start in the future. Are there comments on the, again, on the action items?
Um, oh, I think we talked about uh, at a future meeting, we, we have a deadline around the um, short term or rental policy doing.
I remember if we establish a firm date by when we wanted to um, visit that, and I know we established a little uh, task force.
We.
We started to.
Started to, and the planning board thought that they should handle it.
Oh, they're going to handle it. Okay, so we don't have any action on that at this time?
Just to keep track.
Keeping track, yeah.
Okay, so we may want to put it on the action item list, just because if we're.
We can do an update first of February.
That sounds great.
Second meeting in February maybe.
Okay.
Give them a chance to.
And then the only other thing is, um, I wasn't sure where the water bans stood, if we need to revisit that, given all the precipitation.
Yeah, the state hasn't lifted the critical designation yet.
Okay, so we're still.
Maybe another week or so they might.
Washington. Anything else?
Well, good.
Okay. In that case. We need.
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
Okay, I move the select board open the public tree here.
Second.
Discussion. Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes, answers, yes.
John, yes.
Um. A public tree hearing for three trees is, yes. Yes, the, we have representatives in the, from the friends of trees and our county board and.
We live at the Justin Park Extension.
Um, Tom.
Uh, we'll start with a three pine trees.
Why don't we start with the three pine trees?
Okay, um. Yeah, I, my understanding is this is on a town piece of land right away where the utilities, I've looked at the trees. They're probably third or fourth growth white pine trees, 50 to 75 years of age, growing normally is the way they do in a natural woodland setting. Even though they're very close to the edge of the road and it's very difficult with white pines to tell their overall health. Most of the growth is at the top. Referred to as a lion's tail. That's normal for the way they grew. Excuse me, I have a little, I don't have anything, just a little normal dryness and nasally that I get from the media from. Anyway, uh, hard to tell what's going on inside these trees. There could be a lot of things, issues with them. I see uh, many broken off branches. It could be copper to rancid them. My major concern. Uh, normally those trees, if they do break, they don't fall over, the tops come out of them, et cetera, but my concern would be the cutting of the roots immediately adjacent to their trunks where they want to trench a utility conduit and bring it to. And that would really set the trees back and bring about their demise and if it has to be done. I wouldn't feel comfortable with big trees like that near my house. I don't know the sentiment. I did talk to the man who, oh, who is doing the development. I was, I was running there, but I didn't talk, get a chance to talk to the neighbors, but anyway, yeah, that's my, pretty much my feeling on the trees, in natural woodland trees, white pine trees. Very hard for me to really evaluate the condition because it's so high up, any of the damage to them.
Thank you. Um, we have a very long agenda tonight. So I am going to ask when people speak that they limit themselves to two minutes and I'm going to ask John if he would do some timing for us, just to make sure.
I will.
Is there anyone, does anyone on the board have comments?
I guess a question, Arise, um, is it the condition of the trees that we're concerned about or concerned about because somebody wants to build a utility trench near the trees and we're concerned about disturbing them?
That's why they want to do that.
No, you don't get to speak until I tell you to speak. Sorry. Um, Tom?
What, I'm sorry.
My question is, is the, is the concern about the health of the trees themselves or concern about someone digging near them and unsettling them?
Yeah, well, you know, what I do is I evaluate the health of the tree as fast as I can see it. I did put in that pray, uh, that, that little bit about that will certainly injure these trees, be they healthy, be they sick, whatever. Whenever you trench.
Right, no, I guess my question is what precipitated the, this coming on our agenda? Does someone look at the tree and say they look sick? Or did someone say, hey, we're going to be digging a trench near here and we're concerned about disturbing them? I'm just not sure what we're talking about.
I think it's the latter, but.
Okay, okay. And so the white pines, um, they have very shallow roots, Tom?
Correct.
Okay. Personal, I, I'm not a tree expert, but my own personal experience is that one time I had a bunch of trees cleared near my house, so they wouldn't fall on my house. But it disturbed the roots of the other pine trees and that, you know, within a few months, one of them fell on my house, one I did not get rid of. I'm very concerned about. I just want to understand how close this trench is and Tom, you know, can you?
You know, well, the trees are in a triangle.
Right, I can see that.
Six feet apart on each, each apex of the triangle. And my understanding is that trench will pass within two or three feet of those trees. Right through the center of them or immediately a jet. I think we have a plan here. I think Jody brought, someone has a plan of a lot exactly where the trenches go in relation to the trees.
And I guess my question would be, Tom, in order to ensure that the tree roots are not disturbed or unsettled, in your professional opinion, how far away from these three trees? You know, where would we want to limit the disturbance? Like, what's the diameter of the area?
Further away, the better. If they were hardwood deciduous trees with deep rooted, they're service roots, it could be led in there. And to be honestly, I would, if it were my own house, I wouldn't want the trees there if I were, you know. Yeah, yeah, but I certainly always like to see trees replaced whenever trees are removed.
Right.
If a couple of screening, small, whatever, evergreens were planted here, I think, you know. I, unfortunately, like I said, I didn't get a chance to talk to the immediate about them. And their concerns, but maybe after we hear their concerns.
Um, I think, is there anyone here from the people who are asking to have the trees taken down?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, just give us your name and address and give us a short description of what, what you want done and what.
Okay, my name's Johanna Ross. My address is one Windermere Park Extension. These three trees are basically in the front of our property. And we are digging a trench to provide utilities to a back lot that goes behind our house. And the trees, how they stand today. Like there's been talk of today, like the roots, I think that we're concerned about them falling and doing whatever if we're digging a trench. Would also be easier for us to dig the trench if the trees were not there and we didn't have to worry about them. We're willing to pay to have the trees come down, um, you know, a cost to us. And I think what is one that hasn't been brought up tonight is that there is, the power lines are also right near those trees. And so, um, I, I would say that, and I don't know if Tom agrees, but that the power lines are also of a concern. Um, as it is today, looking at how the trees have grown and how the power line is very low already, but it's, it's in that vicinity. Um, which is, I think, worrisome for the rest of the neighborhood in terms of the power source, so.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer any other questions or give you more details, but I'll stay to the, the minute, two minute limit.
Yes, please.
Um, they already took.
You, you need to tell us your name and your address.
Yes, they already.
Tell them your name and your husband.
Oh, Miriam Ross. At three Windermere Park Extension. They already took down a, a whole big row of beautiful, beautiful red bearing bushes, peaches. And some of them, my husband planted them. And at the time, I don't know if he knew that that was town property or we thought it was our property, I guess. I mean, but they, they're stripping everything away from that area. It's so bare. And it was so beautiful before.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Also, they add to it, oh, Mountie Combs, three Windermere Park Extension. This Ross is not being truthful totally, okay? First of all, with the pictures that I have put in to the, um, if you look at some of them. With the trees, you cannot go straight back. Because we own some of the trees that are on that property. When they did, there's a problem with the survey that there's going to be a very soon a lawsuit with, between us and the Rosses where they say basically, we don't own anything on the right side of our property, which we, there's trees that we clearly own. The trees that they took down, one tree of ours. And they took, some of the branches, they've damaged. You cannot put power lines and water lines straight through because of our trees, you know, our bushes and everything. Unless the town wants to have a domain and, and I, we're not going to, we'll fight that if that happens. But there's clearly, it's one thing for them to be able to take their own trees down. There's nothing we can do about that. But they took down a tree and a bush that, that was on town property that the town allowed us to have on there. Because it added value to the town's property, that's why. They allowed it. Okay, and then there, we have our trees on our property and for the, for the plans, which we now notice cut into our property. They're saying they own part of our property, so unfortunately, there is going to be a lawsuit over that very soon, that you can't go straight back. There's no way you can put power lines straight back and you run into our property. Now, the trees are in perfect condition. They're, they look fine. They were, what, actually, the tree that's damaged is the one on our property. It's got a lot of hand holes and I've asked them to come look at it and everything. You know, hopefully we don't have to take it down, but it isn't. But the other ones, there's no holes and they look fine. I looked at them. In fact, you can look at the pictures if you want. There's pictures of them right, right there. So there's no reason to take them down. The town owns that, that property. They look beautiful. They provide shade for our house. They're not on the Ross's property. They're not even closer, actually closer to our property.
Thirty seconds can give them it up.
Okay, so the evidence is right there if you want to take a look at all of it.
Thank you. Um.
Yes. So I just have a comment about Jody Morse, 11 Jersey Lane, and I have friends in Manchester Trees. And we care a lot about trees, as everybody knows, and we would like to save any trees that we can save, but my understanding is that these are town trees. They are on a utility easement. And our town tree policy specifically allows the select board to make a decision on removing trees that are, that are interfering with utilities. So if there's a survey issue and lawsuit, I don't know anything about that. All I'm saying is that if this utility easement that is owned by the town, I guess, I don't know. Um, and somebody needs to use that and it's going to damage the trees, then there's a good reason to allow those trees to be taken down. I would add that friends of Manchester Trees, we're in the business of planting trees. So if there's another place to plant a tree, either at three Windermere Park or somewhere else on that street, we are happy to do that and we, we do that at no cost to the homeowner.
Right. Do you know anything about the ownership of questions of?
Well, I think further down the line, that's something that I think we need to get involved with.
Okay.
But in terms of the trees that are in question, it's very clear that that is within the town utility easement. Loving that those are clearly the three trees in question. I don't think there's any question about who whose owners they belong to. So they are town trees.
They are town.
So it's your jurisdiction for these three, you know, further down the, the right of way, if there's a dispute about where that line lies. That's something that the two owners are going to have to work out.
Right. Is there any possibility of rerouting the um, utility trench? Or I, I, I can't tell, looking at this, how wide anything is.
Um, I, I mean, is there a possibility of a flyer?
I guess the question is, that I have is, in order to do the utility work that the homeowners need to have done. Is there any way to avoid disturbing the utilities that are very close to these trees? Because that, like I said, I have a personal bias here. I think it's very risky. I just don't know the answer to that question.
Because that becomes a much more complicated.
We're talking along with board.
So I, I have a question. I assume that this, this utility, it's a utility trench, it's going to be under, underground lines and it's coming from the utility pole?
Well, there's also water and sewer, uh, yeah, water sewer and.
I mean, I'm looking at the trees and I, I see the picture and the three trees and there's a utility pole next to that and I assume that's the origin. Where the utility line goes after it gets 10 feet or 20 feet away from the trees, maybe that's a property jurisdiction issue, but it's not a tree issue. But, uh, right around.
There's also water, sewer and gas, which are.
Which are right next to the trees there?
Right, they're in the same area.
In the same area. I mean, the telephone pole is kind of, eh, amidst the three trees.
Right.
But if I look at that, right, right next to, you know, it's within, I guess, 10 feet of them. But I guess the trench is expected to go straight through and I assume that is driven by the property line confines.
Correct, and, and falling within the existing easement for the utilities.
You can't take a left turn or a right turn.
Correct, in order to make that left or right hand turn, you would need new easements.
Okay.
Um, so obviously the homes that have been built, have been built with that, with the knowledge of that easement being where it is. So it's, it's a bit of a complicated process to relocate the easement.
So.
Just add some. No, um, Jeff.
Can, so we could say remove the trees, but with the stipulation that we're going to replant. Something more appropriate.
You could, yes.
Now, then, I've dealt with white pines and had serious problems, so I know they get loaded with snow and winds and they end up on cars and houses.
The sound of a crack while you're sitting 10 feet away from it is frightening.
Yeah.
Don't ask me how I know that.
Through it.
So.
Yeah, I mean, that kind of makes sense to me, though.
My feeling is that we have a policy.
Yeah.
Trees, kind of, kind of utility, uh, you know, easement. And, um. I, I think, you know, I'm, I'm set and debate the same forever.
Can I just add some informations? Okay, first of all, the original plan stated that the power lines and everything were going to go down the Ross's properties. If you look at it, they have a trench, like an opening where they drive all their construction trucks and everything else. That's where originally in the plans, which are in those pictures, we're supposed to be going through this area under their property, not under that. Second, the argument about branches on the power lines. They can very easily cut the branches. We, on our tree that's on our property, that's in front of our property, it's on the town. The town property kind of goes in a weird box, like from our property over to the Ross's property, in a diagonal box. That tree had everything hanging on, like literally leaves hanging on the power lines and the town came and they just, they had national grid come and they cut the winds and everything. So they very easily can do that. That argument doesn't hold water because national grid can very easily come in, cut the power line, cut the trees.
We're talking.
I mean, cut the trees on the power lines. Yeah, well, that's. Well, they can cut the branches, so for them to use the argument about branches on the power lines, it's, they always do, yeah, that's, that argument doesn't hold work because the town tree, they just came back in October and cut the power line, cut the branches.
Thank you. I think you, you've made your point. Thank you.
But these are underground utilities we're talking about.
Branches are just a natural issue.
Concerned about the disturbance of the.
Water, sewer and gas.
That's what the concern is, disturbing the roots.
I think a broken branch versus a broken gas line.
Um, I, yeah. Okay, um.
Uh, so are we going to talk about both trees?
Let's, let's talk about one at a time.
Okay, do we have to close the public hearing or? I'm just, I'm asking procedural questions, Greg, because we opened a public hearing on trees.
So why don't we take up the second tree?
Just asking.
Yep, go ahead. This is, this is fine. The second tree, Tom?
Yeah, the second tree is a Norway maple. I'm not sure if we planted it, but it's a, what we call a double beater with including trunks and definitely has hardwood rot. I would consider it a safety issue and I can understand it's, it's in decline. I can understand their concern with the tree. It's very, very close to two houses, uh, that have a very, oh, maybe only 10 feet apart. It's right in the middle in the corner up there and it's on the weather side of the building where it's a Norway maple. Basil damage and the root flare, uh, it's just like there again, maybe they'll allow us to plant a small flower tree, something to be a more suitable for the location. But the trees in decline and very dead huff and I consider it also has reach of their property.
Um, does anyone on the board have questions for Tom? Does anyone in your audience around the line have questions about this or want to make a comment? Yes, please, name.
Hi, I'm Ellen Flotley of 23 Lincoln Street, the, um, where the, where the tree is located. I'm here with my mother, um, the, the property owner. The history of this tree, it was a town tree that was planted about 50 years ago. It was planted, it was this little tiny tree, smaller than my brother, and now it's much taller than our house. It has, I don't think we ever thought it would, well, we, I was informed when this happened, but this is what I hear. We haven't thought it would grow that tall. Um, it does cause you can clearly see that it is sick and it does also cause um, extensive moss to grow on our porch roof that we're going to probably have to replace that roof and some lichen growing on the side. So we appreciate Tom, I, if, if he's good with it, we're good with it. And also just to say to the friends of the trees. We are of course willing to have a smaller tree planted in that, um, there's some beautiful examples on like a Lincoln Street of smaller flowering trees that we would love to have in its place.
There.
I moved at the select board to close the evidentiary portion of the hearing.
Second. Questions? John?
Yes.
Answers, yes? Kathy?
Yes.
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on the first request, which is the removal of the three pine trees. Is there a motion?
I move that we, uh, remove the three pine trees in the Windermere Extension.
Second.
Can I amend that motion?
Sure.
Just with the stipulation that something more appropriate will be replanted.
Accepted.
Further amendment for the advice, friends of the trees.
Yeah, okay.
Accepted.
Move the discussion by the board. John?
Yes.
Answers, yes?
Yes.
Kathy says, yes, Brian?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
With the second tree.
I'll get to the next tree. Yeah. Um, okay, is there a motion with regards to the little tree in twenty-three?
No, I I move that we uh remove the maple tree at twenty-three.
Second.
Yes.
Jeff says yes, Brian, yes, Kathy, yes, Anne, yes, and John.
Johnson says yes.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. Close the public hearing?
Yes.
I'm going to the board close the public tree hearing.
Jeff.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Kathy, yes.
John, yes.
The next, I believe, this one's used the town administrator recruitment campaign.
So we have with us tonight John Petron from Community Paradise. Business associates, John is heading up the recruiting effort. And is really here to say hello. And just give a quick overview of of the process and take questions that you may have.
Great. It it might be better if you angled slightly sideways so that, yeah.
TV land can see you.
TV land again. Not too far back because.
Oh, where am I? Okay, so um.
Let me just, for those people who are tuning in, yeah, right. Who are maybe watching this in review, um. Greg, who will be meeting us next year and it is time for us to find a replacement. Um, and we have, the town has hired a firm to find as good a replacement as possible. But please go ahead.
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, John Petron, Community Paradigm. Uh, so I'll be a lead person relative to the search process. There'd be several people involved uh in this process. So uh, our principal in the firm, Bernie Lynch, Bernie is a retired city manager out of Low and was a town manager in Chums twenty years. Um, I'm retired out of town of Burlington, town administrator. I was forty years um in municipal government, about thirty-five as a town administrator uh during that time. So I've been working about five years since my retirement in two thousand nineteen with the firm and doing searches of this nature. So first, we want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to work with you uh here in Manchester by the sea and uh we've already started. So I've been in town a couple of days now, met with several folks, uh department heads, and we're getting the various pieces of information we need to develop the position statement. So you've seen the samples, you know, what we put together. So we'll put together that position statement. And uh we'll use that as our advertising tool. So what we're looking at, we worked with Greg to have a schedule that works for the town based on his retirement date. So we're looking at basically having a position statement out in probably mid-January, which is good timing because MMA will have uh, they now call it Connect three fifty-one. Um, I guess I'm not allowed to say annual meeting anymore, but uh, Connect three fifty-one. Um, I will be um occurring uh towards the end of January. Both Mr. Lynch, myself will be there, so it's an opportunity to see a lot of people face to face. I was at the recent managers' meeting, talking to a couple of people already, so we have our, you know, um, you know, our talking to some folks at this point in time. So with that, um, uh, the applicant will be due uh in February. And then we'll meet with the screening committee, uh which you'll be addressing in January. We'll meet and work with the screening committee in the February, uh March timeframe uh to review the applicants and to interview uh applicants. Again, the screening committee will make the decisions. We're not choosing, you know, candidates for you. We're recruiting candidates. The screening committee will review, uh will have interviews. And they'll, um, their charge will be to develop a list of finalists to bring to uh the select board. We're looking um at this point in the April timeframe uh to have interviews uh before the select board uh for finalists. That will give an opportunity um uh to uh work on the appointment, the contract procedure, uh you know, with a new candidate. And uh potential notice that any candidate has to give if they're working, you know, as a manager simply self, which can be up to two months. Um, can be up to three months, but typically it's a sixty day notice in uh many communities. Um, so that will be ready for a very smooth transition uh for when Greg's looking at retirement. So that's the process in a nutshell. Uh, you've received an email from me um last week. And I've asked that you contact me, a couple of you have, waiting for a couple more. You know, um, if you can contact me to try to set up a one-on-one with myself. And also involved um with this will be Jen Lefferts. Uh, Jen is a communications expert. You had her information um uh in uh the package. And uh Jen will be assisting with the writing of a position statement. But we'd like to talk to you individually about what are the characteristics characteristics you're seeking? You know, in a town manager, what are some of your goals, the goals of the town uh and the board? And uh we also like to understand whether projects. Um, and I've been getting that in talking with the various department heads with Greg and Greg sent me some information um uh as to that, so we try to pull all that together. Um, uh, between Bernie and myself, we'll be talking to candidates. And it's good for me to understand all this as I'm talking to candidates. Because people want to know, is it a good, you know, is it a good fit for them? Um, I'm trying to, you know, uh, you know, work with you as to a good fit for the town, but it has to be a good fit for the candidate. And candidates want to know, can I be successful? You know, uh going forward, and that's my role is to talk about that, you know, with them going through. Um, so that's the process going on. It'll be a little bit challenging because of location. Location is, you know, uh like in the old real estate term, uh you know, it's it's, you know, that's that's very important. And your location where you are, right now, we say, we look at almost a forty-five minute, you know, uh um uh commuting area, people aren't moving, you know, necessarily for jobs, you know, uh in the market of today. Uh, so again, we'll be working uh to do that. We, you know, we talk to a lot of folks on a regular basis. Both Bernie and I are involved with the MMA Suffolk program. We see a lot of people through that. Um, had somebody in a class uh not too long ago, um. Absolutely. Good little star with your refrigerator too. She survived the day with me, let's let's put it that way.
Yes.
Um, so um, so we we talked to a lot of folks and but that's, that's pretty much the nutshell. I know you've got a heavy agenda tonight, so I could talk about this for a long time, but I'll turn it over to the board, you know, as to any questions you may have um of me on the process.
Yeah, yeah, uh, good, good to meet you, John. I think I was on a telecon with you, was that about a month ago or something like that? Uh, I've got a couple of questions. One, let me just start off. The first question would be, what is a typical tenure now for a manager? In the past, say, five or ten years? We've had a very good run with uh, was it ten years, I think? Okay, I assume that's probably at the outer edge, but tell me, what should our expectations be with the person that we're.
The minimum we look for is three years, but that's not, you know, that that's the minimum. What we talk about is five years. If you can see five years with a person, um, you know, going forward, that's very good. Um, you know, it 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 fluctuates with time, you know, as to right now, things have been difficult in areas of the last couple of years. There's been a lot of turnover uh in the last five years. Um, it was very quiet a little bit earlier this year. In the last three months, it seems like it's picked up a lot with turnover. Uh, but typically, I would say five to seven years, you know, is probably a good timeframe uh to look at.
I know, and maybe it's a function of the age of the person that you have, and is this a whistle stop or is this it?
Yeah, it is various pieces and and it depends on, again, the fit that comes in in the end. You know, um, Greg was a good fit here. Um, you know, you look at, you know, I did thirteen years in one community, seven in my last. So um, it it's different pieces as to what occurs.
Well, as as a follow-up to that, you sent us a a long list of the folks that you had recruited in a number of communities.
Yes.
And I checked it over and there were four towns where you recruited in like twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one. And then the town showed up again a few years later.
That's correct.
Okay, so I understand that's on the short end of things. Uh, and I'm just curious, um, was there something that kind of came through with all of those? Maybe they all had different situations as to why they turned over so quickly. We don't want to be on that list twice.
So a lot of times it's, how's the board working with the administrator? Yeah, the board can turn over, so sometimes, you know, it brings a different feel, you know, what's going on. Um, and um, you know, sometimes people are lucky to have, right now, in in, you know, Massachusetts as a whole, there's been more turnover in, you know, uh select boards. And you don't get as much consistency or continuity, you know, from that side. That can have an effect. Um, uh, sometimes it's, you know, you're hiring someone who's um, you know, looking for the next step, you know, quicker, you know. Uh, some communities realize they're not paying, so that, you know, there, if they can get someone for three years, that's a good run maybe for them. That's not the norm, but that can be the good run. Uh, I think it's, you've got to look at each situation.
I understand the board's expectations. I mean, some boards say, we got a guy, I hope we can hold him three years. I don't think that's where this board is going.
No, I I get that and you're in a better position. You know, Greg and I have talked about that, you know, especially with the pay situation and so on. You look at that and uh some of the, you know, the things that are going on, this is a good community. Um, having somebody, um, you know, coming out who's had a dozen years, you know, um, you know, in the slot that helps. Um, and people will say stability seems like it's good. So um, you've had, you know, other people, your police chief has, you know, been with the community, you know, a very long time. You look at some of that with department heads and people will say it's a good community. Um, uh, you know, potentially uh sign up with.
Okay. I certainly have questions when I meet with you, but I'll refer to my colleagues.
No, I guess my, just the overall process, when do we need to finalize the steering committee? Um, screening committee, excuse me.
So by the end of January, at the latest, so I'm hoping by your second meeting in January.
Okay. And I saw that you mentioned it briefly in your letter in the cricket, but I haven't seen any promotion of really signing. Encourage people to come forward, um, like the at-large residents we talked about.
Let me make sure Tiffany's getting that out.
Yeah, I, the only thing I have seen is that your letter, your column in the cricket, that's the only mention I've seen. Thank you.
No, I think that uh, as we develop, uh, I know that the biggest challenge we have is ten years worth of infrastructure and projects. Or we've got fifty years of, I would not gonna call it neglect, but certain other areas were more important. And now we're facing, uh, the can has been kicked all the way to the end of the road now. And so I think that if we're looking at ten-year projects, sure, everyone else said the same thing, is that, I mean, someone who's gonna A is gonna be project oriented, but also has ability. Who's not looking for this as a pit stop.
Sure.
All right. Uh, I look at Manchester sometimes as a place where people want to end their careers or they want to start their careers. And I think we're looking for someone who wants to enhance their career for, you know, a long period of time, and that's the biggest concern I have. And that's what I've been hearing as to facilities and stuff, so we'll be highlighting uh, the um, the facility, the need for a facilities review, you know, uh going forward, so that'll be highlighted in position statements.
Have a facility.
Yes, you have one. What's that?
We did recently have a facility.
Yes, that's my understanding, but it's it's now trying to implement something.
I mean, just, we'll have to see how this unfolds, but eventually we want to get down to three candidates, so what, what's the timeline looking at that, where we want to be then?
So again, that'll be the April timeframe. Um, we'll be looking at, you know, it it'll be up to the screening committee, three to four, you know, unless you send a direction. Um, we say three or four candidates, you know, um, at that point to bring to the uh, to the select board for final interview.
So we want to be at least by April.
Yes, April works well. Um, and um, at this point, that's what we're looking at based on the timeframe. Um, our biggest issue tends to be getting people together, you know, um, uh, screening committee members. Uh, because they'll, you know, getting schedules together is is difficult sometimes, that's why um, you getting it in January, then we can try to work up a schedule that they can all agree to um for interviews.
She mentioned some towns are unable to hold on to people because they don't pay much. How is our pay range?
I think it's um, um, reviewed it uh with Greg. I think it's um, uh, it's reasonable. You know, so it'll be in the market uh to look in this area.
So you'll see later tonight, they gave a recommendation to have a salary reserve fund. Uh, not only for this position in case it's needed, uh, but other adjustments that may come out of the operations office. So you'll you'll see that later this evening, we'll be talking about them.
The way we do it is we put it in saying a s- a number on the salary with a plus or minus. You know, and then if you've got that candidate, you know, that you, you know, you would, you know, really like to negotiate for, that will be your decision, you know, at that time uh to make.
A lot of times you will be, as you bring on somebody new, it's just the nature of the process. It'll depend on.
Depends on user experience, that, I mean, that's not necessarily true.
It's not universal.
That's why we put the plus or minus, you know, we we don't wanna, you know, um, we want to make sure the process is favorable ways. You know, with that, so that's why we work a plus or minus on a number. And then that's, you know, that's your negotiating position, you know, in the end and um as as to where it can be.
Would your screening interviews be uh live or?
No, that's all confidential. So the only, when the process goes through, the only
What I mean, live, I mean, in person.
That's up to the committee. So um, um, we offer it. I I I do whatever the committee wishes, you know, if they want Zoom.
You're capable doing it by Zoom.
We still do a few Zoom here and there, mostly live now, but we did three years of almost all Zoom. Um, so we have the capacity to do that, so that's up to the committee. Um, I offer it to the committee as to how they want to do it.
Do you have anything that you need to tell us that we haven't asked about?
Uh, no, I think, um, again, this was just a, you know, more of a broad, you know, overview discussion uh tonight. Um, I'll be back to, and I'll work through usually the chair and the administrator as to when we're ready in April. As to, you know, the process, how you want to proceed, what your process, you know, at that time. So we'll talk about that, you know, uh, when it comes a little bit closer, um, you know, on that and make some suggestions, you know, um, on the process at that point. Uh, but I think we're good at this point, so again, if um, um, if the rest of you can just respond to me, so we can get your, you know, have, you know, the opportunity to have a quick discussion over the next week or so, um, you know, with um, uh, all of you so that we get that as well. And certainly be, you know, willing to have any level of discussion, you know, and answer any more questions you may have. But again, we'll be asking you uh questions about um the community. Uh, but again, we've been in um, uh, today and spent the, you know, a day here a couple, um, last week or the week before and, you know, talking to folks and we're gathering information so that the candidates will have that. Um, so when they receive our position statement, it's hyperlinked, you know, and, you know, so that they can find information about the community so that they're prepared uh coming in for it. Okay. Great, yeah, same here, so we'll be talking again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next article on our agenda is to review and approve. I hope we're not required to approve. It does not finally. It does not finally. Because frankly. I don't usually start with a long discussion from me, but I'm going to this time. Because the first time I got involved with harbor, with, yes, I have a boat warrants, was with the Inspector General's report on favoritism and private gain in the assign- assignment of boat warrants. And I think we've agreed generally that we're not so worried about private gain. But I am very worried about favoritism. Um, and, um, this is, the regulations as presented by the Harbor Advisory Committee would work very well as long as we have, uh, honorable people on all sides. But the purpose of regulations is to control the behavior of people who aren't honorable. And I am very concerned that the boatyards could use lorry, the lories that they've left for, um, to reward good customers. I, I think that is not the way a harbor should work. Other harbors work that way, but I don't think that's the way I want to see Manchester work. And, um, to that end, I'm going to suggest that I spend some time between now and our next meeting and come up with what I think would be, would reflect the opinion of this committee, and I, I have heard everyone's. I don't agree with everyone, that's okay. I can put down, I can represent other people's views. And I will put together something that I think would keep, uh, a, a less than a greedy boatyard from, for example, saying, okay, you're the first one on your, on the list, I don't want you, so it's nine thousand dollars a year. And cha- charge something different, and to be, with neither boatyard, and I, I have checked the Manchester Marine. They do not list their price, slip prices. It's contact the boatyard. And I don't think that's the way we want to handle. So that's one aspect. Um, it's also going to be important to make sure that the boats that are on these morgues are actually the boats that were taken off the list, so there isn't some substitution. Um, and there are a few other odds and ends. Um, so I would like you to give me the opportunity to put together a couple of paragraphs, it's going to be longer than this, that describe how commercial morgues, um, should work in Manchester.
What, um, what kind of timeline would you be looking at the next meeting?
I would get it to you, I hope, a week before the next meeting, so that you have a chance to look at it. Exchange email for obvious reasons.
Right.
But I would, I would like everyone to have a chance.
Uh, just to touch on one of these bullet points, you say that neither marina, uh, list their pricing. As long as, I'm not a big fan of government intervention, okay, the requirement of things, however, if it is actually, uh, it's a public-private partnership is what this amounts to. Uh, to, to address that, can we say this is the price?
Require them to tell us this is.
We would only require, I would like to require them to tell us what they're going to charge.
Advertise it as well.
Yeah, so that everybody knows what they should be expecting.
It is our.
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of in agreement with you, and these guys know what slips cost. They're in the business, and they can put a number and give it to, give it to buy. Just to say he can.
The other, the, the other element that did not mention is, I think it's important that buy-on identify the, oh, the harbor master, identify the candidates and not have the boatyard go down the list.
You're on the same.
Okay. Okay, um. A consensus on it. Uh, we have, we have five minutes before the next meeting, before the next.
No, we don't.
In that, in that, um, I will take that as a consensus, I will get, um, a potential regulation out to you, um, between Christmas and New Year's.
Yeah, as long as we have enough time.
Yeah. Okay, then, um, sorry.
Yeah.
I apparently can't read in the agenda.
Is that one of the requirements?
In order.
Right, Affordable Housing Trust update.
I'm Jeff, thank you. John Poirot, but Chairperson of the Affordable Housing Trust, here with Muffin, Peggy, Sarah. I believe, um, Gretchen's probably.
She.
Probably online.
Yeah.
Um, when we met with you in August, we departed with the understanding we'd come back um, in a reasonable time to give you an update on activities. So I see this as two parts. One, um, and when we had the meeting in, in August, we left with the, what we, what we wanted you to understand is the importance of the front of the free property as a, as an asset to the town for the purposes of housing to help us move the, the plan that we're working with the housing authority that involves Newport, um, Plains and, and Moding Place. That's what we left you with, and it was based on our very close work with a, a consultant who, when he looked at the request for proposal and he looked at the sites, says, John, trust members, it's just not available land. And he stressed that, so we came to you in August and said, this is what we're doing, this is what we've learned. What we left with is, we have some challenges with land, and we wanted you to just hear that from us. So part of my, our presentation here is to see if there's been any further discussion on that. But, and I, I leave that with you, Stu, on before we leave, if you wanted to answer that, that'd be great. But, um, my responsibility now is really just to report back on what we've done. I think there's been some positive developments since we met in August. And I think the most positive is, um, me and fellow, a couple fellow committee members met on site with the Concom, met with Steve Gang, and it was very encouraging because we looked at the site and he sort of pointed, we, 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 we sort of looked at every is who were possibly considering for development, and he was talking, pointing out the wetlands delineation. We, we went to a spot that, when we actually did our proof of concept study, five years ago, it's the same location, it's on the other side, if you're, if you're on Pine Street going out of town, and you just, just go right past the MHA, there's the two private homes, there's a, there's a trail going towards the back there. There's a significant amount of MHA property right there. When Steve looked at that, you, you know, he just, he, he felt like it was quite reasonable. So it's, it's very preliminary, but that gave me assurance that what we're talking about at Newport isn't a pipe dream, that we could possibly do something on that. Second thing is we, uh, piggybacked with the town that was working on the survey. Um, it was a very limited scope of survey with more than back right. We then got the survey team to do a survey of the entire site, so we can get the exact location. And equally significant, we'll see, uh, points of interest on the site, a typ- a typical survey. And my, my understanding, as I summarize for folks, is that, uh, the field work is done on that, and we should see a survey by late December. Um, and what we hope to do is use that to, to guide us, as we're trying to formulate a plan. But more importantly, I think is to give a sense to any developer who will be responding to a, a forthcoming, uh, developer request for proposals. Um, at the same time, we then, still on that plan of, of working with the MHA, we've got a survey in the works right now at the plains, that's something we didn't have, we had some question about land, uh, boundaries. We'll, we'll have that completed sometime in, in, in January. I think that'll be positive. I think, again, that's something we'll be able to make available to a developer, they would like to see what the meets and bounds are, you know. So when they're formulating a location of buildings, they'll have something that's, that's, that, that's quite real. Um, we've, I've continued conversations with the, um, I was gonna say the Salem Housing Authority, but it's really the Marblehead Housing Authority, but they're working with the administrator out of the Salem Housing Authority. Um, Marblehead has got a similar type of plan that we're proposing. It's a public housing authority, but they want to create new units and possibly rehab. So we've learned, we've had some conversations where they looked at our request for proposal and they said, John, I think you should do this differently, I think you should do this differently. Uh, they introduced us to the developer who was the designated developer. Spoke to the designated developer who, who talked about, uh, possible state financing sources that we were a little unsure on. But he, he gives the impression that with the new state bond bill that came in, well, I think within the last year, there's some avenues that weren't, that hadn't really existed, that could be potential sources of income that could finance, uh, as a subsidy to tackle the development that we're looking at. Um, I think that's it for that plan. I think, um, housing, uh, Affordable Housing Trust has met on two occasions in executive session, and we've, we're examining possible purchase of a Manchester by the Sea property. Uh, we've gotten to the point where we've done an appraisal of it, and then I think our meeting tomorrow night, we're giving an executive session again on that matter. But we'll also have a, a, a subsequent property, another property that we'll be discussing tomorrow night, possibly pursuing. So those are two possible properties in town. Um, I, I think good news for everyone is, hasn't happened yet, but, um, I've worked very closely with North Shore CDC to really refire the, the application for the twenty-nine units at Powderhouse, to get the state to focus on getting as many that are income eligible on the state SHI. We've had back and forth, uh, get turnover here, North Shore CDC had turnover. The, unfortunately, sort of languished, but we've got, um, town planner here, we've got Affordable Housing Trust, we have North Shore CDC that are laser focused on this. I just met with Mark today, we're this close to getting back to the state. Mark, the town planner, uh, gave a recent little, about three weeks ago, the state got back to us immediately saying, where is this document? Where is this document? We've addressed that. So I think we'll be in a position probably, hopefully in a couple of days where we can say our application is with the date, and now we could sort of do our little push to the state to say, how about it? I'll give a quick summary that we closed out the, um, our little COVID program. Peggy can talk about that if you want. Um, where we assisted town residents for rental and, um, mortgage assistance is probably one of the best um, examples of a trust within the Commonwealth, getting involved immediately to help residents that were, that were hurt by COVID. Give a summary that we served forty-eight households, we put out about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand over about three or four-year period. Um, but I think that's, and you heard this speaker talk at the town meeting to support the MBTA. So we, we met, we took up the matter, we voted to support the, the warrant, and I was the representative to talk on the Affordable Housing Trust behalf.
Yeah, so a question, so you're looking at a couple of houses that you may purchase here in town?
Correct.
Okay, I, excuse me, properties. Uh, properties in town cost a lot of money, what do you got, like a one and a half million dollars? Is that leverage somehow, or, cause, cause the money will go pretty fast and something like that, and once you have a partner.
Yeah, I, I agree. It, um, we can only go so far. I think we would use it as leverage with, uh, it could be North Shore CDC, it could be Harder Lights. I mean, they, they could take the lead and put acquisition money, but, but with the understanding that we are there as a partner. And we, we, we know the source of funds that we, we have. It's not unusual for a a town or an affordable housing trust to play that role with, with a private developer, whether it's nonprofit or for profit.
And they have monies through, I don't, you know, either, either state programs, I don't know that they have investors, probably not, but they've got state programs that can leverage the money, okay.
You're welcome, Brian.
The question, um, I think last time we talked about, uh, the need for this board to make a decision about, um, uh, Pleasant Street, they can double site. So, um, given these other avenues, is that still a urgent need? I'm seeing shaking heads.
Yeah.
Okay, so then my question to, um, uh, Greg is, where are we with the testing that the DPW was doing on the School Street site to know if it could move?
So that's, that's just getting underway now.
Okay, so when will we know, I guess, this, um?
Um, probably with February timeframe.
In February?
We'll have at least a much better sense of what's possible.
What's possible.
And Kathy, in response to your point, I don't want to leave the select board with the impression that when I said we had good news on Newport, that we were adding, I think it was an affirmation that what we were hoping for and assuming is possible. And we, we got that word, so we, there wasn't any, that act didn't create any net new units. It really just, Steve confirmed for us that, you know, it seems like it's a reasonable plan.
But we still need to have a discussion and a decision around what we do about Pleasant Street. The linchpin right now is waiting for this survey on School Street to be completed, or testing, I shouldn't say, not a. Geo test, yeah, we need to understand what we can do on that site before we know what's, what we can free up on, on Pleasant. So, okay, so February.
I just think you've been very busy.
Yeah. We're trying.
Affordable Housing.
Thank you for the work, keeping people in the houses, um, through COVID, that was really important to those forty-eight households. I was not aware you were doing that.
We benefited greatly by an anonymous contribution from a town member. We probably put in probably over a hundred thousand of that, hundred and seventy-eight, maybe even more than that.
And my organization administered the program at no cost of the town. I run a nonprofit actioning, so we operated the program with no admin charge, no anything. We did it at no cost.
Thank you. Um, good luck with, with the properties and, and especially, um, getting the Powderhouse Lane properties onto the SHI. There are a lot of people who put money into that and, and will be gratified when finally it begins to do the clues.
Yeah, Peggy and I really got involved in that in the last month or so, and we've kept in touch with Greg, so as we move, Greg will be the first.
Okay, let's make up the sack.
If anything, a signature.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for your work.
I'll go to the ready for the. Yes, please.
Oh, the boober.
Oh, okay.
That's on the list, that's pretty, that is fine.
No, um, there's no reason that you should do this, even if you want to. You made it, you made it clear that, that it is within our purview to extend your license for New Year's Eve. Um, and we were wondering if you could do us a favor. Um, there is, we're hoping to, um, do some work on the culvert. And we're waiting for a signature.
Um, so I gave, I met Chuck and, um, with my attorney. So he is just getting ready to. Go back and forth. So as soon as my attorney says I should sign, I'm going to sign it.
So unfortunately, we haven't heard back from your attorney. So it's a little frustrating on our end, so.
I apologize for that. I will, I try and contact him and see if they want any more.
And so an alternative is 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 to go ahead and sign the chapter ninety one and then work on the details of the easement language as a as a secondary step. And that way it doesn't hold up the permitting process, but it still protects all of your all of your rights. So if you, otherwise we're going to lose almost six million dollars and. I I don't want to be around when that when that bridge fails.
I don't want to be around.
So. Exactly, so.
Protection and I just. Protected. And so what I heard was that, you know, they're going to remember me and my part, my wall. Well, this goes through, but he doesn't want to put anything right. So I just feel like what if something happens to me, what if something happens to Chuck? You know, like, I mean, it's not.
We're happy to put.
You know, and so I just.
Would it make sense, Greg, for you? And you and Chuck to get together?
Wow, yeah, I mean, I like I I tend to be almost like, you know, like five years back. Seven years ago. Chuck knows what my concerns are, you know what I mean? And. But I don't know.
I don't want to lose six million dollars.
No, I don't want to lose my businesses.
You will if that bridge falls and fails.
But so I just, I I just have counsel. So if I have counsel, I just want my counsel to tell me that it's okay to sign.
So I if Greg, if I'm understanding the conversation here, there are two different things.
Two different.
Right, there's, there's the chapter ninety one, is it permission? Permission to do.
So chapter ninety one just needs a butthis to say we they can proceed with their permitting process.
So it's what we need now is the. A permission to proceed with permitting process. The secondary step is to work through, you know, how do we protect everybody financially, blah, blah, that's secondary. What we need right now is the chapter ninety one document signed. And what's the deadline before we lose the six million dollars?
Yeah, we're we're rapidly approaching it by mid-January.
So.
Well, my wall, I've been asking because they keep telling me it's really not part of the project, but I can't because, you know, a late person, I feel like I have a very difficult time. Seeing how that's not going to be disruptive to my building and my business and my. Well, my well being. And so I have approached people about doing my wall, but wanting to wait until this project is done. So I put it off, waiting for this project to get done. And that we have, I've, every time I got with Chuck, literally for the past five years, I've gone in and said, like, you know, I want to make sure that this is part of. This project that in the wall.
I think.
I know they're two separate things, but I keep saying that's my carrot. And he keeps it, and he's never, Chuck has never come into the business. He's never talked to Kelly Bailey, he never talked to any of the addresses. Like, he's just like, my businesses are worrying. And so. We are all worried.
What are you worried about?
I'm worried about my building and I wanted, I want to get, I wanted that, we want, and I've been asking him, while you're doing this. While we're getting the permit, because if this is a difficult permit to get, and I have to get the same permit to do my wall almost, right? So that I, let's all put this, put my wall in this part. Put my wall.
And we have said, I believe, I know I've said it to you, and Chuck has said it to me, that we will make you whole.
I know, but I want it in pink. That's all.
Yeah, I can understand that. So what is it going to take to do that, Greg?
So my suggestion is that if we can commit tonight to sit down this week with your attorney. And then I think we can move forward.
Yeah, I think that's right. And listen, I thought, I'm not the attorney on this matter. I have somebody else that's smarter than.
I think we want to make sure that the attorney understands the time constraints and the financial devastation to this town. Six million dollars is a lot for this little town to absorb. I'm choking on it as I speak. So I'm not sure that the attorneys understand the deadlines and we have to get this resolved this week. So.
I think I'll have to turn tomorrow and respond to me.
Set up something this week with him and the town.
Yeah, let's be in touch tomorrow. We've set up a date.
Okay, with that, I'll move that the board approved Boober's request for an extra half hour liquor sales uneasy.
Why not? Sorry, John, could you repeat that? I apologize.
I move that the board approved Boober's request for an extra half hour. Is that what it is? I thought it was an hour.
They told me twelve thirty. Wasn't that what's in the?
Yeah, it was the letters at twelve thirty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So half hours, good.
I'm confused.
From the amendment. Predicated on.
Chapter ninety one.
Chapter one, chapter ninety one license permit being signed. We'll do that.
Can we do that?
Yes. Your prerogative.
Okay.
That's your amendment. So, yeah, I accept.
Do you want to vote on the amendment separately or?
Oh, wait, so it's a condition on that being signed?
Yeah.
Not not the easement part, not the financial discussion, just the chapter ninety one.
We can even go up to bid.
That's okay, I just.
You're not giving up, we don't believe, and I think your lawyer, your attorney will tell you, you're not giving up any rights as a, you know, as it stands to your particular business. All right, that happens after the fact. But we can't even have this discussion until we get all the ducks in a row as far as the the permitting sign. You have the last business to sign off on.
I'm the only business that's touching the wall.
But as far as the chapter ninety one license, we need your you to sign off as well. We acknowledge that there are other attenuating circumstances that we will address.
But no, we suggest them. I want, we don't change anything, we don't affect them, so that's why I'm waiting.
It's not productive to go back and forth.
No, Greg knows what's got to be done.
Let's set up a meeting and I think we can make progress.
Okay, do you want to?
So. We don't have a second though. Or we.
I'll second his amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, let's vote on the amendment first. Do you? Do you first, do you accept? Brian's amendment.
Yeah, as long as it's. Yeah.
Okay.
Then we just vote on.
Then we go down the order.
Okay, only based on your signing.
Yeah. That's it.
John.
Uh, no further discussion, yes.
And since yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. So do we, will we sign that? We have to sign something?
We have to sign something too, like this.
We just went by the office.
Like that, we.
I think this is part of the unit. Yes.
So we don't have to reconvene at some point?
No, no.
It's just for that one day and.
So we still need a second on the original motion, right?
No, you accepted the amendment, so.
So we've.
We voted on those.
So we're done. Okay, good, okay.
Okay. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Now. Um, it is. Seven forty nine PM on Monday, December sixteen, I will call the finance committee meeting to order. I have with me in the room Maury Creighton, Peter Twaney, Tom Parsons, Nahana, I'm Sarah Melish, the chair. And the lead and the old man is on Zoom. Greg, confirm that and. And this meeting is also being recorded.
Okay, so. We're at, what is. Typically feel the feel feels as a pick up for all of you for the budget process. There's been about three months worth of work already by the department heads. We've been working hard and and putting together numbers and working not only on the operating, but also the capital budget. So thanks to them for all their hard work today and we'll continue to work with both boards as we go through those. January, February, as we aim for a March final, final set of numbers. Also, one of your thanks, special thanks to to Tommy, Kevin, Andrea, Melville, who really helps. Hold it, maybe else to help pull all these numbers together and, you know, put the exhibits together as well. And so this will just be a high level overview. And tonight is not designed to get into a lot of back and forth on the budget, really introduce it to you. And to highlight what I see as some of the key critical decision points that will be needed during the during the coming months. I will say that I feel like this budget process that we're going through is is feels different. For a couple of reasons, a couple, three reasons. One is that while inflation has significantly come down. Typically, government is lagging behind in our reaction to those inflationary pressures. So union wages tend to lag a bit behind those pressures. And the and the price pressures on supplies, energy, et cetera, tend to lag a little bit. So you'll see in this budget, those pressures coming to bear a little more than you have in the last couple of years. Another unique aspect is that we are in the middle of an operations audit. So we have a consulting firm. On board who's who's sitting down with department head, will be sitting down with many of you, asking your thoughts on how. Operations might be different in terms of even new services or different services or new organization. With an eye towards how we might be more efficient and more effective in our services. So that may come into play as well as we get into January into February. Consulting is will aim for the end of January to have recommendations to all of you. And so that may have an impact on this budget as well. And then thirdly, the school district budget is very much in play in terms of. A big unknown at this point. Significant pressures on on wages, they're contractually obligated. Just under a six percent increase in their wages. And they've been given a very high health insurance number for next year. They're hoping that that'll come down. And that'll make a major difference in their final numbers. But right now they're looking at in the mid twenties for a percentage increase or even higher. So that's that's going to put real pressure and the placeholder number that I show in in this budget this evening is just that, it's a placeholder. It'll change. And we'll talk a little bit about that as as I get underway. So we've, we're using the Clergo platform and we'll have that available to all of you, also to the public. As we get that all uploaded, we've had a little bit of a delay because of the refreshing of the platform. But Andrew working hard with them to get all of the. Detailed background information up on that site that'll be available to you as we as we go forward. So I always like to just start with sort of the big picture and the the global numbers. So about a total of forty one point five million. It's actually a little less than last year's total expenditures because last, current year. Because of some higher capital expenditures, primarily the ladder truck and the Mason building. Had an anomaly high third fiscal year. So we're actually down a little bit in terms of total expenses. But again, almost twenty million of that is earmarked for the schools, both the regional school districts and the Votech school. Little under fifteen billion for town operations. Very similar number for capital expenditures, I mean, what I would call the normal capital, not the. Uni capital, as I just mentioned, not the Mason, not the fire truck as examples, but your sort of run of the mill capital. Three point two, a little higher than than last year. I keep saying last year, this year. Because this is next year. And debt payments down a little bit as we retire old debt. Enterprise fund, very similar, a small increase at one point eight. As a placeholder, I just kept community preservation project basically at the same number. That that'll vary depending on the actual number of projects, but to make year to year comparisons. Easier, I typically keep that number the same. And then your state assessments and OPEB, other post employment benefit payment liability, we continue to pay. And and tax abatement set aside. So that comprises the the forty one point five million in total. Again, you've seen this slide before. It's just that I'm not expecting to read it all. So just a sampling of the the services that we're providing, water and sewer, you know, every day that. That water comes out of that faucet and is good to drink and is used for domestic purposes and you can also flush down your wastewater and you don't have to think about it. A lot of the stuff people take for granted, but it's it's the stuff that town staff are working on day in and day out to provide. Really strong services to the town. And I think people appreciate that, but I I always like to remind people during budget time, what their dollars are buying. About thirty two hundred lane miles of of roads to to plow or put salt down on. Thousand tons of trash, seven hundred tons of recycling, hundred and twenty tons of compost now being processed in a new facility that serves as a regional hub. Thousands of bills, almost ten thousand utility bills alone on an annual basis, ninety one hundred tax bills that go out. Excise bills, et cetera. You can you can read the list, but it's obviously a long list of services and this is just a sampling of all the good work. That staff are doing and that the dollars that people pay through their taxes are are providing. So honestly, every budget is based on the number of assumptions and various goals. Key assumption is that citizens are running the current level of services. They. We are expecting those services to continue. Also assuming that we want to continue to make good progress on our backlog of capital. We continue to put new monies into capital every year on that regular capital. And what you will hear a lot about this year as we work through the budget is talking about that, you know, twenty five year plus facility plan. And trying to make some solid commitments towards. Those longer term facility needs. We do see higher demand. We try to absorb those within the departments. We will see one staffing proposed increase for a part time clerk to go to full time in the town clerk's office. And I have a question mark here on fire. The the chief has asked for a deputy chief. Which has been in the in the request column for a couple of years now. It's something that we'll we'll need to talk about. And then, of course, we want to keep maintaining our strong fiscal posture, maintaining our triple A rating, which is. A rarity amongst municipalities. We're one of the few municipalities in the state that have that triple A rating. It's good to hold on to that. Particularly when we're looking at a lot of bonding coming up and to maintain our reserves, which this budget does. Some of the specific priorities that that the board here, select board, have identified, certainly expanding housing diversity has been. Important piece. We just heard an update from the Affordable Housing Trust to see how we can keep moving forward on that. The desire to to close on the Mason Lodge, our portion of it. And to get going on building that addition to it to house the senior center. I mentioned the facility planning. We're done some good studying on some climate impacts and how we can position ourselves to be more resilient. And we need to start implementing some of those plans. And sort of standard policies of of goals of wanting to continue to maintain that strong fiscal stance. And as always, trying to figure out how we can. Um and as always, trying to figure out how we can uh with our partners in Essex, figure out the uh. The financial funding challenges that the district has, the school district has. Welcome to a a new head this year, given the challenges that that are there. And we continue to work, uh make progress on the whole governance process, how boards and committees are are communicating with each other. And as I mentioned, that operations audit is there as well. So, really three fiscal challenges that uh are not new perhaps, but are are worth emphasizing. Certainly, uh as I mentioned, even though inflation has has come down, we're, we're dealing with some lag impacts. Uh particularly in wages, uh union contracts on the town side are between the three, three and a half. Plus there are some new steps that are built into those contracts that had been uh signed a couple of years ago now. And health insurance has reared its double digit inflation again. Uh we, we're having a pretty good run there for a number of years, when we were down in the two, we actually had a, a year of zero increase. Uh two percent, three percent, last current year, we had seven percent. And right now the projection is for a ten percent increase on the health insurance side. So that's going the opposite direction of where we want it. We're being told to be prepared for that for the three or four year run. But no crystal ball is perfectly clear on that, but that's what we're being told at the moment. And again, uh we talk a lot about capital, um and that'll continue to be a focus. Yeah, I really already made these comments. Uh and then the, the climate resiliency efforts as a third. And then the school, the school challenges as the fourth, as the, as the four big, big items that I see. Uh continuing to be front and center as we look at the budget and and the challenges that that we face. So in terms of twenty six and what new dollars uh we might expect. So the preliminary budget that I will show you in a minute calls for a one point six percent tax increase. And one reason why I'm holding back on that is because of the school. Uh that assumes only a two and a half percent increase to the school budget. And frankly, that, that could double. Two and a half could become easily a five percent if not more, well, for Manchester to contribute to uh. To the district. Uh so we're go- we're going to need. Some taxing capacity in order to to fund the school budget. So this, I'm assuming for this current status, for this current version of the budget, to be at one point six percent. We have new growth, about twenty million dollars a year, that's pretty consistent. Goes up and down a little bit. Uh you know, we generate between a hundred and eighty five to maybe two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new revenue. Um for this current year, we generated two hundred and thirty, I'm showing two hundred thousand in new revenues from new growth. For FY twenty six. On our local receipts, these are, you know, the the excise tax, permit fees. Other fees that are charged, we had a, a big adjustment uh in the current year, we boosted it up to three point four million. And so I'm, right now I'm showing that being level funded.
I, I had expected that we would be increasing local receipts to reflect the um billing permit fees from CST, which are. Three or four hundred thousand dollars.
So I, I wouldn't put that in your operating budget, I would, I would target that towards capital because it's a one time.
Yeah, but it's just gonna convert into property taxes i- i- in subsequent years, which is gonna be about the same amount.
Right, which I'm targeting off of for capital.
Yes, we will. I mean, this, this starts in July of twenty. Twenty five, I think.
There'll be polling permits probably in the spring. I mean, we should, we could see some of that money in the spring. So, but we can get into that, if we get into the budget, my, my recommendation is that it it gets both, both those monies. Are targeted towards, towards capital. So, um very modest increase on state aid, we, we get very little in state aid being. Because we're a regional district, the bulk of state aid, the school aid, and that goes straight to the district, so we don't, we don't see that in in our budget. Enterprise funds, there'll be a small increase in rates, we're seeing a slight decrease in volume sales. So we're anticipating uh again, pretty much level dollar receipts there. So if I add up those new dollars, about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in new money. And then uh redirecting some of that higher than normal capital expenditures, both the capital and to some, some operating. Uh for a total of just under one point two million in in total revenues. And so where does that all go? So that's what this next slide shows, uh where that one point two million roughly would go. So salaries overall, uh we have a three and a half percent, three to three and a half for, for wage increases. Plus some steps, uh plus uh a couple of boosts in uh hours for some positions. To, to part time positions. So that's just over four hundred thousand. Uh as I mentioned, that health insurance number at a ten percent increase, uh about a hundred and fifty four thousand. Your pension increase of six, six point two percent, just over a hundred thousand. Other expenses included in that is a, is a pretty healthy boost, the legal, of our legal expenses have been. Having uh much higher, even, even if I take out the uh. Uh the forty B project, which obviously was a, was a unique case, uh but even without that, we are definitely spending more on legal than we have. In the years past. I guess it's just a matter of things getting more complicated and more litigious as life goes on. And then I'm showing, we're here, I'm showing a two and a half percent increase on the school budget for for, for just over four hundred thousand. So all of that comes to one point two million, and again, that assume that one point six percent tax increase. And then you see those, those notes down below. So again, just to highlight some of the key changes, so again, most, mostly staffing is the same. The, it does show part time clerk going to full time in the clerk's office, town clerk's office. And then uh council on aging clerk was split between the council on aging and the uh conservation commission. This budget uh moves that person full time to council on aging as they gear up for. Uh the new senior center operations, uh and expanding programming. And then, the, the question here, I, it's not budgeted in this, in this current form of having the deputy fire chief. I think a lot of that, in my mind, um that. Will partly depend on our success in working with our partners in Essex to see if we can uh start down the path of some shared services. Well, there may be some opportunities to do that uh soon, so we will continue that discussion. Mentioned the benefits uh going up and then the energy supply legal are some of the bigger changes. In, in the numbers when you go through line by line. So the capital funding, again, uh we will spend a good amount of time on this. We've been running for the most part for the last ten years without doing bonding, paying on a pay as you go basis, that has served us well. Uh but that, that run is about over in terms of being able to do some of these larger facility needs that are, that are coming. Coming due. And so we will be looking at over the next uh potentially five years of some significant bonding in each of those five years. BPW facility, PFAS. Filtration systems. Potentially the elementary school, that's underway, that design work is underway. The, perhaps a little further out, but a public safety facility out of, out of flooding arms way. Uh to make sure that we can continue to operate when the needs are highest. So we have a lot of, lot of needs there and it'll, we're working on a, on a multi year plan. That tries to um minimize the pain, but we're not going to eliminate the pain. Uh because we're, that's. We just have to do bonding at some point, there's no way around that. So the current plan, and we'll talk about this further, but it's showing upwards of. An additional two and a half tax increase for the new bonding over the next, each of the next five years. So that'll be a significant point of discussion, you see what you think about that and see it. That is uh palatable for the, for the taxpayers to, to bear, uh given the needs that we have. So just, just to put this in context, what does this all mean for, for po- folks? Um property values, as we talked about in the, in the tax classification, tax classification hearing. We're up to one point seven million as the, as the average home value and the median is at one point one two five. So at our tax rate that was just approved uh by the, by the state at nine fifteen for the current year. Down from nine thirty, uh so for that average value home, that's fifteen six. And for the median, it's ten three for an annual tax rate. And just as a benchmark number, what does a two and a half percent increase look like for the mean? Um it's just under four hundred dollars and for that median home, uh just over two fifty. And then just to put that in context of statewide averages, not that it means a lot for us here, because then we don't see those kind of. Values here, but anyways, the, the average, if you look at statewide, is about six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. For a typical home, um tax bill of around eleven fifty per thousand. Generating seventy six hundred dollar tax rate, um and tax increase last year, average statewide was two point eight percent. Um so that translated to just over two hundred dollars and 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 an average tax bill. So it just gives a little context for where we are. So some of the, the key uh key decisions here, that uh I think we, we need to focus on and spend the bulk of our time on. Looking at staff decisions, again, I mentioned that deputy fire part uh position. Um something that's been requested for us, the second year being requested and wasn't put in this current year. Is requested again for next year. And again, I mentioned the, the additional hours in the, in the town clerk's office. It's actually, we've reached back to what we had quite a few years back. But uh it's been a long time since that's been built. So obviously, we need to make some final decisions around staffing. Uh there may be a couple more that emerge depending on the audit and recommendations from the operations audit. Maybe some shifts, we'll be recommended as part of that study. So there may be a few more added to this list, uh but that's currently what's, what's in the hopper. And then obviously, I've been talking about capital funding, we will need to, you know, put significant time and energy into mapping that out. It uh, it's, it's time to make some decisions, certainly on at least some of the facilities. Uh in order to, to make sure that we're starting down the road. And, and to give some uh ability to do the necessary design work and planning that's needed to tee these projects up. These facility plans don't materialize overnight, it takes a, it can take a couple of years just to do the design work. And vetting it all and getting it ready to go out to bid. So there's some upfront monies that are needed to make that all happen. And then certainly, um I think there'll be a lot of time spent debating school budget and it'll certainly take. Your time and attention to help move that debate along. Obviously, uh with the override failing last year from Essex that, that. To many people, that was a setback. And it'll be uh a challenge to, to get that. Perhaps to, to be a yes vote in Essex. There's always, always that possibility of a super town meeting if it, if we fail twice to agree on a budget. So. It, it sort of begs the question about the regional agreement and whether or not that needs to be cracked open and and reexamined. That won't be a solution for twenty six, because that'll be a, that's at least a two year process would be my guess. Uh to open up that agreement and to come to any new terms if, if that's what wants to happen. But it's still out on, it's still on, on the table as a potential to take a look at going forward. Now those are, as I said, those are those major challenges, uh and I, I've done this every year, I close on budget or about choices. And uh you know, do we have the appropriate size services that, that are appropriate for what people want? Are, are we doing the right things at the right time with the right people? Dollars can be put in different categories and priorities can shift, so that's, that's where those choices come into play. You know, we haven't uh. Obviously, had very little commercial girlfriend town, we have really our first major commercial project and. I would bet you to say decades with the CST project. So that's phase one, the phase two have been received approval for permitting, so that's going forward. You know, that will certainly help uh with tax revenues and can help with those capital needs for the gap. So that uh, you know, brings us to those, the, the next steps coming up. Uh this is, as I say, some launching of phase two of the budget, where it's more of a public process. Of your meetings uh in January and February into March. Chincom will be meeting weekly to, to go over these numbers and to meet with department heads to hear more details. About the, the challenges and the requests. Keeping the, the select board up today and there'll be some joint meeting opportunities over the next couple of months. The goal of finalizing everything in March as we prepare for um April, April town meeting, the fourth, fourth Monday in April. So, that's a quick overview of, of the budget and some of the key issues I see. Needing the, our attention over the next, the, over the next few months. And uh look forward to your input and finalizing the numbers and putting a credible budget value for the voters. Happy to take any initial questions people have. Uh but as I said, this, tonight really was just laying out the highlights and setting, setting the framework for the work ahead.
I just want to say there's one outstanding piece that the finance committee is still waiting for, and that's that compensation study. If we can get that before January eighth, that'd be great.
Yeah, I've got a list of things that, that you asked for.
Yeah, okay.
And uh frankly, we're just, I, I needed to get this done first. But I'll get you, I'll get to that before I, I leave for the break here.
I just said one thing, um so we, I think this is a year we, we meet with Dan Sherman regarding uh Votech.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that might make sense to move that meeting earlier, just because of these healthcare impacts on pensions. We might want to know about his inputs earlier in the budget cycle rather than, we usually catch it at the end. You know, it's kind of like a filler meeting before we go to print.
Add to that, the information we receive from him is different than we did in the early years. And we're no longer seeing the, the required dollar amount. It's, it's lost in all the numbers.
So let's, let's bring that up front.
Yeah.
Bury the lead, as they say.
Exactly, yeah. So exactly, if we fund X, what's our devil, when, when are we gonna pay it off? Because we were originally gearing up to pay it off in like twenty seven or twenty eight, because we were paying much more than the required. But I think we've lost some of that momentum.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, we're pretty much on target, uh but what you could do, I mean, we are, uh we do have. Higher than targeted in, in the reserve, in the fund balance.
Yep.
You could, you could. put a healthy amount into the OPEB and and then free up some of that annual contribution and redirect that towards capital, for example.
Right.
Bonding.
Because I think a milestone out there is particularly of the big capital. Understanding when OPEB drops off and when debt from the high school drops off because that frees up a lot of them.
Yes, and I've got that modeled in that multi-year plan.
And if the Essex Elementary is going to come on earlier, it might be good to get rid of the OPEB their own.
Correct, right.
So while we're talking healthcare, where are we on moving the town employees to a health savings account approach?
So that's that's part of the mix for the next round of negotiations?
Well, not everybody is is a member of a collective bargaining unit, correct?
True.
So I I guess what I'm in order, that's a big change, but it can save big money. And sometimes the way, you know, you can take that approach is by making sure the salary people go first, demonstrate the savings, and it makes the collective bargaining process easier. Because I'll tell you, once people get comfortable with it, the young folks really like it because they can save a lot of money.
Yes, they can.
And and I'm very concerned about our hesitation to move out on something that will save us money. It may not save us a lot in the first year, but it can demonstrate how much we can save later, right?
Yes. Yeah, so we did meet with our health insurance advisor a couple of weeks ago, you know, we were talking about the timing of how to roll that out.
I mean, for the for the non-union folks, I mean, we, to me, this is a Nike, just do it. You know, we we really got to move that along. Because the to your point, the health insurance is not getting any more pleasant. And it might also be an example for the schools, you know, that perhaps they could leverage. Not everybody there is under collective bargaining either. You know, I think we got a lead here.
And I think all the major companies moved to that eight, ten years ago.
Like ten years ago and but it was uncomfortable, right? There's a big change and people were nervous, but once people really saw how much they personally could save, they were all over it.
We struggle a little bit with how many plans we can offer, but we can adjust that.
I just I think it saves big money over the long terms.
So I wanted to verify the number for the CPC revenue. Because it's different from what they're carrying on the CPC spreadsheet.
Yeah, I didn't. That's just a placeholder.
Okay.
I just I just put it in as so it's so it's consistent for me to use, so it doesn't affect the bottom line. But yes, that we'll we'll get the right number in there.
You awake, Andy?
I'm awake. What was the question?
Any comments to make, questions?
No, I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I'm thinking about my collective bargaining position.
Well, I'm willing to forego a raise this year.
I was about to offer you a hundred percent raise.
The devil is in the details. You know, so.
So so speaking of the details, there are some errors in in what you received. I think what I'll do is I'll just email those to anybody.
Okay, okay.
Rather than I was I was about to walk through them, but I just I think it makes more sense to email that to you and you can find the pages. So the other thing that's not done, there are no pages on those. The first thing I would do is have you write down page numbers on each one so that we can easily go page to page. The first seven pages are numbers, but it's going to continue through.
Right.
I apologize for that. But yeah, there there are, we did, I found some errors in some formulas, so we we'll get those corrections out to you the next day or two.
Just that while we're on the big picture, one of the big things we were hoping to do is to face Essex Elementary with coming off the the other debt for the high school. It looks like that's being pushed up. Then one of the things we might look at to soften this blow of successive increases is to put off the DPW until that bond comes out, you know, or until CST comes online. You know, when we have more revenue. So that's just something to consider as an option to reduce the tax.
Yeah, I I think I think we're going to have to have a discussion with the schools or maybe the school building committee to find out when they're willing to be gains. Bond anticipation notes would yes, would delay when we have to start repaying principal and therefore have lower payments until that twenty thirty two that we were hoping for. I I think that's important for us to look at.
One of the problems, we've been kicking cans down the road so far.
Right.
At some point, we've got to start to put some priority on some other facilities, some of the school building too.
Right, and 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 the price tag doesn't have to be twenty million for a garage. Right, we we need to get creative.
Everything twenty million.
Isn't that interesting?
Yeah, only the schoolwork.
No, that that's on my list, but John was going first.
No, the only thing that's scary is the two and a half percent plus the two and a half percent. And I'm doing the math. And that's thirty percent in five years compounded about. And that's a lot.
That's a lot.
And there are a lot of people that are going to do that math.
Well, and it may be that in this town meeting, we can somehow get that across to people and try to get some feedback. We need feedback.
I think people need to know it sooner rather than later so that we really kind of.
Can I, we did, we others did a great job with the three A.
TA, yeah.
MBTA zoning was getting outreach and it's getting out there explaining. And maybe this fiscal year, we should really getting that as high as we did with the because when it came down to town meeting, you guys had all the answers because you already heard the questions.
Right.
And I mean, it went smooth. I thought it was very well presented, and I think that we should use that as a template
I think that's a great idea and specifically to work our consistent assumption, which I'm not sure is accurate, which is that people want the same, right? Because same level of services. And I say that because I'm not sure we're asking. I I think we could be asking the question a little bit differently, you know. In the private sector, you might come to ask each service owner to come up with what are your top three underutilized services? Or, you know, you have different ways of asking the question and then you could say, hey, this service that I'm performing here, very few people use this, you know, maybe I can save some money if I don't do this. But you don't know what the impact is going to be unless you ask the residents. I I don't know that we'll ever be able to really test our assumption unless we present the residents with some potential. Here are some services that if we didn't do these anymore or we did them less frequently, we could save X number of dollars. Is that okay with you? And maybe it's not, maybe it is. But I think there's a general you know, people here in this building, they care so much about the residents that there's very quick to respond on everything. But when you're delivering lots of different types of services, not everything needs that same high level of response. And so I just, I I think we need to think about what we offer a little bit differently and specifically in terms of the headcount, potential headcount increases. I I don't think we should go near that until the operational audit is completed. That that would tell us whether or not we have the right headcount. But I just, I think we need to be asking these questions a little bit differently.
I would also suggest we need to accumulate the information we have. Because every department is receiving requests in from the residents. And if we were capturing that, absolutely, we would have a better understanding of maybe where our current services aren't sufficient, maybe.
It's about right sizing them, right?
But you get, the town gets daily communication.
Absolutely.
Residents, and I think if there was a way to capture it, it might.
So it's basic service management and and that would also that data would also help us understand if we need to be charging for certain services that perhaps we don't. You know, this is all about service management. I just think the data collection is very important, but I also feel that the department heads know where they're, you just ask them, you know, if we if you we could stop something to save you time, what would that be? And they probably come up with, you know, they know their areas. I think they would come up with some you know, low hanging fruit that we could at least look at and discuss. And if even if we didn't save a dime, it would start the process of getting them to think that way, which I I personally feel is necessary. Because what I'm concerned about is what I saw in the summary is our biggest area of the budget, if I read it correctly, outside of the schools was general government. And it was increasing the fastest. And that makes me a little.
Everybody's health insurance is there.
Well, but and that's why I was poking at the health insurance plans, right? Because that's an area we can save some real money. So I just think when you see general anything, G and A, just well, big and growing faster, it's it's something we we need to really take a look at.
We really need to look at our fees also because
That's what I think, exactly.
We upped the ZBA fees to a thousand in application. We have not received a single complaint.
Exactly, exactly.
It's a drop in the bucket when you're spending a million bucks.
Our town employees do a lot of wonderful things and respond for free, you know, and so we just it's an area where we we need to take a more, I think, business oriented approach. So I think the only other thing I wanted to mention here was the I was glad to see that we are talking about you know, the operating budget. I I I, you know, I think we need to focus less on the rate. We obviously have to figure out what fits in the two and a half, you know, percent guidelines, but it looks as though we're proposing an operating budget of an an increase of four point nine percent.
It's actually this, it's the tightest three point eight.
Okay, still, we had like seven percent last year, another three, just in the operating I'm talking about. And so people aren't getting that type of a raise. I mean, I don't know anybody who's getting that type of a raise. So I just think we need to be really cognizant of the budget and and look for opportunities to do things differently. These are some pretty big numbers.
I've got a question in terms of efficiency. I mean, one big reorganization here is land management. I think it's shoved under lame man.
We, yeah, we put Comcast, we put ZBA, we put STC.
Right, right.
All under one roof.
And from an organizational perspective, that's efficient.
We don't know yet.
I guess we don't know yet. On paper, it looks pretty good. But I I I I don't know that that's necessarily a money-saving initiative. I was kind of looking through the budget and saying, does this save us anything anywhere other than maybe some managers don't have to speak to as many people because things are does it save a body somewhere?
Supposed to go hand in hand with some reduction in our committees as well.
Oh, you mean the volunteer committees?
Yes.
Oh, we can save money there.
Well, not so much money, but when you save, when 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 town employees have to, like you said, have to talk to fewer people to get things done, there is an efficiency there and and a focus and things can get done faster. And when you can do things faster, sometimes you can save money. But it's very hard to quantify.
It'll have to, yeah, that they have to have to work through. I just been looking through the budget. I saw things moving around, but I didn't see any money disappearing per se.
Yeah, so then that's really a response to better but better management of the paperwork and not having
That's fine.
Drop, you know, slide between the cracks. You get a lot of criticism about, you know, one board approves something, another board approves it, and the two permits don't seem to jive or there's not following. So it's it's an attempt. It's an attempt to 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 plug those shortfalls. It wasn't so much an attempt to save a lot of money.
I'm good for now. Just Greg, I think your articles in the Cricket are really good. For example, last week's. I wonder if it would be worth it to have a, let's maybe open a can of herbs, but for more for feedback or ideas, please send to. And, you know, I think this.
DeMori Creighton.
I'm sure for what to wish for. But I mean, essentially requesting feedback on particularly those articles about the budget stuff and capital. You know, any place we can get feedback, because we do sometimes operate a little bit in the vacuum on some of this.
And I think the challenge with feedback, and I think we saw this in the MBTA zoning, was we received the feedback when we had specific things on the table that people felt impacted them and they could react to.
Right.
The town budget's different. They, other than ALS, people don't feel you know, that they're personally impacted. They don't understand the personal impact until they have something specific, and that's what makes it much more difficult.
Exactly right. And that's why I say go to the department heads. They know their areas. And you know, it's called management by walking around. In a forty million dollar budget, you can pretty much trim five percent without working too hard. Okay, ten percent gets ugly.
That'll be school back.
Yeah, well, be happy to. I'm sorry I couldn't make the last meeting, but I I think you're exactly right, Sarah. We need some, I I I think we could be doing things differently, but until we start presenting some very specific examples to the residents, we're not going to get the feedback that is needed to help us trim in the right places because we talk about managing the capital, right, to make things fit. Well, the other part of the puzzle is pulling back a little on some of the operations growth so that we can also help things fit that way. We 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 talk about adding, adding, adding. We don't necessarily talk about the reshaping and the right sizing and and that's important as well, given the millions we've we've got ahead of us here.
Like my my only what scares me about asking the residents that question is they're used to a high level of services. The answer might come back that they want more services.
But but then, as long as they're willing to pay for it, right? And so what the fee, right now, we're just, we have a bunch of assumptions, right? But real feedback is something you can work with. But right now, it's just, oh, everybody wants the same as we've been giving them. Do we really? You know, we haven't asked the right questions, you know? I I don't disagree with you. They can come back and ask more.
What are you looking for? Yeah, just don't ask the question.
Right, yeah.
I don't know, maybe it's
Not asking the question just means the budget continues to grow. And, you know, four point nine percent after a seven percent or a three point eight.
We had pushback on the budget at town. Which is saying to me is not. I'm not sure how much concern there is about the tax rate, and that's what I can't get my hands on.
Well, it's not the rate, it's the the bill they get, right? And so.
I haven't seen the capital budget yet.
Yeah. I and once again, this is about trying to prevent something bad from happening a couple of years from now, right? Sometimes you've got to slow down your operations in order to build wiggle wiggle room so that you can afford that other stuff you have to do.
Maybe that's an article that has to show up in the paper fairly soon. Terms of, this is kind of where things are going. You know, high level, five, six years. Let's see who writes letters to the editor, recalls you.
I know who's
Or calls Maury.
And it's a really simple example. I mean, some of us have been on this long enough. We were paying outrageous, what I considered outrageous, snow plowing bills
Yes.
for each storm. And we were plowing both sides of the street on the heater and other places within like twelve hours of a storm. And we said, whoa, we've got to cut back on this. What if we just plowed one side in twelve? And we said, whoa, we've got to cut back on this. What if we just plowed one side in 12 hours and left the other side? And some of the selectmen at the point who were making big bucks said, we get all sorts of calls. And we said, well, let's monitor that. So we went one side, 12 hours, we saved $30,000.
Exactly, right.
And overtime drivers and.
And the number of calls that came in, seven.
Right.
So it's like, wow, seven calls, $30,000.
I remember that every storm.
Let's keep thinking about this.
So haul the snow out of it and wrap it every storm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
So it's just.
And I, we used to like shut off the, I'm not sure anybody needs that system anymore. Let's just shut it off. See who complains. Nine times out of 10, you know what? Who cared? And it's, it's, it's not through any malice that this stuff happens. It's just an accumulation of stuff. And once in a while, you gotta clean out the closet.
I think the point this year of listening to as much information as we can get is a really good one.
Maybe have some budget items in time.
Now you can do trash every other week. That'll get people's attention.
Well, we had issues over trash.
Oh, man.
When they switched it to, they did switch.
Different carrier or different service provider?
We switched the trash pickup to every other week.
Oh, you already tried that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's like dogs on the beach.
Yeah.
There were too many diapers. That didn't work.
Or maybe recycling is supposed, I don't know.
Yes.
I was just gonna say on the trash one, I mean, we, we are considering a pay, you know, per week, or just put it as an outside fee, but it's not going to be so much a savings as it is, you know, taking it out of the tax bill and making it a, you know, everybody does their pay as you throw bags. We're gonna need to do like pay as you throw carts. So like, you know, some of that stuff is on the table, but I don't know that it would be a net negative so much as a net neutral.
Net negative, yeah. Sorry.
Doesn't save you money and you still get the calls.
Right. I take my own trash to the transfer center. I don't.
There are a lot of communities that do that.
Trash, sadly, sounds.
I don't have very much trash.
Wow.
Yeah, so they, so the carriers who do curbside, they will no longer, you know, another year or two, no longer have crews picking up. It'll be all the automated.
Ah, yeah, I think communities with that, they got special trucks.
Yep, they have the special trucks and the special container.
And only one person on the truck.
Just to drive.
Yep.
That's common.
That's, that's coming real soon.
Yeah.
It's coming real soon. But that'll, it'll be an upcharge for all the new carts. So. So. I don't want to give that detail tonight, but that's.
Then we won't have the bags anymore. Pay as you throw bags.
I know towns that.
Have you watched, have you watched one?
Yeah, I've watched it.
Zip around.
My son's town, that's what they do.
Yeah.
The biggest pro, it's, it works, but problem is the trash guy comes at five o'clock in the morning. And it is a noisy, noisy, uh.
Today they came at five o'clock.
That's all right. So in other words, consumers might have to buy their own barrels or something.
Yeah, depends how we set it.
Yeah.
Then you got a problem with people that don't buy them.
There's problems that.
Well, then they, their trash is there and.
And they're the transfer station people.
Interesting.
There aren't any more. It's, you have. Okay. I think we still have Ocean Street. We, and other things to do. I will adjourn the finance committee.
Thanks, Sarah.
All in favor, Maury?
Aye.
Peter? Dean?
Aye.
Andy?
Aye.
Sarah? We're done. Thank you for coming. Thank you for doing it. And the, I mean, the PowerPoint's gonna be. Yes, it looked like one.
It's the book.
It was blank though.
No.
Yeah.
It was a PDF.
Of the book.
On the spreadsheet.
Yeah. I must have done something wrong, I guess now, because I flipped on nothing. I mean, I got.
I can send the video.
Peter?
Well, that's, I know, I was finding out what I did wrong, so. Anyway.
That's what this point is.
Yeah. Let's hear it again, maybe.
Yeah. Thank you.
I don't know.
Too much color. Obviously. Thank you.
Yep.
We have package of what's been happening on Ocean Street. The last time we discussed it, I believe we decided that we can communicate through the press, but that in the meantime, there would be something in the capital budget for a high level engineering study. My concern about choices, and Ocean Street has got some very high choices.
It does, so, so.
And getting good, getting professional information. But not the, 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 but this is not, this is beyond what our local department should be able to be expecting.
Right, so, you know, one of, one of the bigger issues out there is what, what is, what are the permitting agents willing to consider? What do they consider formidable?
Those that may change.
That, yes, that could change. Though a lot of, a lot of those are state versus federal, but there are also Army Corps permits involved, so that's obviously federal. So we, we continue to, to scour for some grant opportunities, a couple, a couple more promising ones that materialized, so we're working on those. The draft budget does include in the capital, $100,000 to advance some analysis for Ocean Street. So that is, that is in there that ideally would, would be used potentially as a match to some grant funds as well. That original study was, I want to say it was in the $200,000 range. So. Getting closer, getting closer. So. And, and that's sort of the short and sweet update, that it included some money in the capital and we're continuing to pursue funding opportunities.
We were also looking at, for feedback on the application that we rejected.
Yes, we did get feedback. Not remembering the exact details of that as I sit here. I know that we don't score well on these grants due to our low population. Ocean Street is a beloved road, but it's not, it doesn't have the traffic volume that another community might have when one of their main artery routes or something.
You say traffic, this is cars, this isn't people.
Right.
This is cars.
Right. And then the other area where we don't score well is a lot of the funding is being focused on EJ communities, environmental justice communities. That's, that's a big focus of, of the funders. And again, we just don't score well on that criteria. So that, I do remember those two points in particular. I'll have to revisit my notes to see what other feedback they might have given.
So who's, who's.
Right, the, sorry, I just thought I'd jump in. The, the biggest one was, you know, there was something like $24 million worth of applications, and there was only 12 million of funding, or maybe even less, like 8 million of funding. So it was, it was very competitive, and that was something that, I guess, unfortunately worked against us, given all the other things you mentioned.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chuck. That's, that's a good point. And frankly, we, we've received some funding, you know, recently with, with Masco and the, the Village CZM grants. And so they do, they do try to rotate it around to different communities. So you often take a break sometimes, so. Particularly Grant.
So let me ask a question. I, so basically what we're talking about doing is potentially putting a hundred thousand in the draft capital budget. Therefore, we wouldn't be able to spend that until July, or would it be later than that? Like, would we, could we, let's say we, the voters approve that, okay? And we wanted to go forth and get an engineering study or something underway. Would we have to wait until July to begin the process of getting those bids in? Or could we do all of the upfront work in the spring? And given, you know, the voters' approval, just have the PO, you know, July 1 or something?
Yeah, so, yes, we can, we can go out to bid and get that all lined up and have a contract all ready to sign for July 1.
So let me ask a second question, then. Because, you know, based on the information I see here, this has been going on for, you know, what, six years? At least, longer than that, but there was a lot of inactivity for a long time. So I thought I just heard in our finance conversation, our reserve budget is a little higher than our target.
Yes.
Why do we have to fund 100K and hope for a grant to fill the rest? Why can't we ask for 100K of taxation and, and use the reserve budget to? Basically, what I'm, I don't want to see another year go by with complete inaction. And if we're always relying or hoping to get a grant, to me, that's what's causing the delay. And, and, and what's the definition of insanity? Keep doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. So if, if the grants aren't, aren't getting what we need, can we try something different? And maybe the voters will say, no, maybe they wouldn't support it. But I don't even think we've put it in front of them recently. I, I just, I'm nervous about relying and hoping on another grant and missing an entire year again. But.
So, yes, you can, you can, you can do that. That's one plausible use of, of that fund balance. So that is an option.
Are there other options? So I'm, I'm just, I, that came to my mind because I heard us talking about it, you know, 10 minutes ago. Are there other options other than the grant? To, you know, fund the study? We need to get us the information. We need to make a decision. Because that's really what, we can't make a decision about what to do about Ocean, Ocean Street until we get, you know, a proper study done, and it seems like the grants aren't getting.
The only, the only third option that comes to mind is potentially you, you convince a professor of an engineering class to use it as a case study. That's, that's, that has happened. That's not out of the question. There's certainly a lot of good universities and colleges around that, that have, that could do that. So that's, that's the only third vehicle that I can think of.
Well, so there's, there's $100,000 or about that in this account, or that's what's being, that's what's allocated?
That's in the proposed budget.
In the, in the proposed budget. I, I, I mean, the, the thinking was is that it would be a higher level type of thing. I mean, the other, the other proposal's been, I don't know, 200, $300,000. And this is like, maybe it's matching funds. Here's 100, and you throw in 100, et cetera. But if we're looking at a higher level type of thing, we're not looking at that kind of money, I hope. It's less money.
Right, it's not going to be as definitive of an answer.
But how much did the rotunda, I know, I keep going back to that model because it was so successful in getting information that we needed and, you know, the information to the residents so we could get the feedback and make a decision. How much did the study cost? They came up with the four options. That was probably very expensive, right?
I'm remembering the number. I don't, I don't know if you remember that, Chuck, but Renee, uh, I, I want to say it was 100 something.
Because that's what I was looking for. I just thought that was really well done.
This is more, I, I would say Ocean Street is more complicated.
Definitely more complicated.
So, it's a comparable that is going to cost more, but again.
Can I ask, what do we expect to find from this new study? Are they supposed to tell us that despite everything that we've been told, so far as permitting goes, that there's other ways of getting it done? We can't get permitting from the agencies. Why are we, I mean, we've been told, my understanding, and Chuck's correctly from wrong, that a lot of things that we need to do require state and federal permits and approval, and we're not going to get them. So are we spending good money after bad?
Well, I.
Well, do we definitely know that, though?
Exactly.
Without a study, right? If we don't have a, some kind of study, we don't know what kind of permits we're going to bring forward, right? So we don't really know what is doable.
If, if, if you want to get the definitive answer to the question of what is permissible, then you, you hire the engineers to, to, to develop different scenarios, and they run that up the land, up the flagpole to the different permitting agencies and get feedback. So in talking informally to, to the permitting agencies, you know, we have been told that, you know, don't, don't count on a major fortification of, of that road. That's not what they're permitting these days.
Okay.
But don't we, we have to keep part of this route?
You have to keep both parts of the road, you don't have to keep it connected.
I mean.
As you're trying to be connected.
You have to have access to Crow Island. You can't get rid of the whole road. So they have, something has to be allowed to be done.
Not necessarily.
I think the two beach, I think it's White Beach.
So.
So we ended, we're getting.
There's no guarantee that the road lasts forever.
Understand.
No, I, what I'm saying is, so what's the access to Crow Island going to be?
Both.
It may not have road access. I can't guarantee that 50 years from now.
Right. So I think all I was saying, though, is we, I, I believe Chuck has done the due diligence that he can.
Right.
But we're past the point where that's enough, right? And when I say I'm looking for options, they should include a pedestrian, you know, only option for a certain part of Ocean Street. You know, Crow Island, we have to have some definitive options as to what to do, whether it's road access or not. But I think, you know, if I was a property owner along there, the casual conversations are no longer, they're not good enough, right? So I just.
That's why people, I think, are anxious to have the definitive.
I mean, it's not like they've been, they've been patient. So I'm just want to make sure that if $100,000 in the budget is not enough, what do we need to get the options? So we can have the right conversation, make some decisions, and go.
So I would say it's probably in the 230, 250 range.
So then, do you want to, so then the question is, do we want to go with 100 in the capital and take the rest out of reserve, or, or, you know, try to ask the residents, do you want to fund the whole thing out of taxation and cut somewhere else? So I just, I think those are the conversations we need to have during the budget process, so we don't hit the can another year.
Well, I just don't want to keep asking the question till we find the answer one year.
Right, but that, that's what the options are. They should include road access, no road access, whatever, but.
You have a hand up.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, I have a hand up. I actually live on Ocean Street.
Wait, before you start, your, your name is?
My name is Preston Travis. I live at 100 Ocean Street.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to frame this in two ways. The way I view it, there's two things going on here. The first, it was the general maintenance of the road. And over the last 10 years. And over the last ten years, I've seen failures in the town maintaining the road as it relates to, you know, the, there's, there's larger storms, so there's more damage. But unless the road is fixed, what is happening, and you see it between Crow's Island and that bridge, you see failures in the sidewalks, because what's happening is the water's getting in there and year after year with the freezing, and additional water getting into the storm wall structure. Um, it's eroding. And at the end of the day, what the town has done is filled it with rocks and gravel. And I'd like you all to walk down Ocean Street and see that if you stand on the bridge, all that gravel every year you pour into those sidewalks instead of fixing them, is now part of the ecosystem of the marsh. And, um, at the end of the day, I'm very appreciative of the D P W when we have a storm moving the sand. But I feel that's one issue that really hasn't been addressed. And the one thing I put on record with the town is if I was fully in charge, I would remove all the sand. And that includes the sand at, um, White Beach and the sand in front of the houses, because it's on the wrong side of the street. And that's creating part of the, the destruction going into the marsh. Now, whether we can maintain the road altogether, that's item number two. It's not the maintenance item that's occurred over the last ten years. That's more of what we need to study for, and that is to decide what we're going to do. But I want to remind the town, I just checked the other day, and between the five houses, we're paying two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in taxes. Um, I don't believe any of us use the schools, but I think the schools are important, but we'd like to have our roads maintained. So I think it's worthwhile, especially with the tax increases, I was on with the budgeting me, meeting, to try to push this forward. And at the end of the day, if it comes back and it's four, five million dollars, let's think about how we can monetize it, um, with those two bays. Uh, and I don't think that's a discussion that the residents on the street, whether it's the immediate residents or the residents behind that use the street, aren't willing to have to figure out how to get creative. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Um, Chuck?
Right, so I just, I just wanted to speak a little bit to the maintenance of the road. I, I think that we have actually done, uh, what we can with the maintenance, because maintenance is also a budget line in the item, uh, in the, in the budget. Uh, so, you know, we, we do do that, and if you actually walk on the area that the gentleman was mentioning, there, there was an effort to put concrete in certain areas. The problem is, you can't tell where the concrete needs to end or where it needs to go in the voids behind the rock wall. And so it's a much larger project, uh, in terms of our operating maintenance budget to be able to get it. And I, I agree that, you know, I, I would guess I would just look at it like, we've done what we can, we, I understand what the problems are, but there's a limit to what we can do to address it. And so we've tried, uh, several other things when it comes to maintenance. We tried installing, uh, the, uh, different uh, erosion control measures on the Black Beach side. We've tried putting in Jersey barriers to protect the road on the White Beach side. We put in additional, uh, trapstone and, uh, revetment stones on, uh, some of the other low-lying areas. So it has been a litany of things that we have done to try and prevent uh, what nature is trying to do, and I think that is the reason for the study. So I think, I think we're generally in agreement on that. Uh, but, uh, you know, it, there is a kind of a limitation to what can be done and what can be done uh, within the permitting kind confines that we have. Um, so I, I guess that's just something I want to point out for everyone that, you know, is taking a look at this and, you know, I under, I understand the issues, but it's not a simple solution. If it were simple, it would be done, is what I say. Um, so I'll, I'll leave it at that for now.
And, and Chuck, this is Preston, and I appreciate that. And I totally understand. I think the D P W comes out there and responds very well, you know, when there's a storm surge. I'm just with you. It's the long-term maintenance. And, you know, whether we had to accrue money ten years ago over time, to have enough money to address some of the maintenance issues on a structure like that, you know, that was built probably in the late nineteen fifties. But I appreciate the work that the team does trying to keep the road clear. I'm just pointing out what we've done, because we haven't put the right amount of money in it. If, if you walk the road, it looks, you know, it looks rough, and I think you would agree with me on that. You've done your best, but it is what it is.
Thank you. In general, I don't appreciate back and forth between people who are not on the board. So if it comes up again and you'd like to speak, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. Thank you.
So what, you want to pick up Abby's suggestion or that we do tonight, or?
I, I just think as part of the budget process, I just don't want us to forget, and if a hundred K is not enough, let's make sure we put before the voters whatever it's going to take to get the answers, because otherwise we'll be having the same conversation next year.
So even in the best grant scenario, it would be basically a match? Is that what?
Um. Not all grants require a match, but most do in a twenty, twenty-five percent range.
You need to speak to like an engineering firm, or you feel this has been dealt with enough, but you know what the numbers?
So, yeah, I feel like, you know, Chuck was able to get a very comprehensive scope of work and an estimated cost to that. That's what went into one of the grant proposals, so I feel like we have that.
Yeah, we know that, right, and whatever that number is, they'll work to that number. So. It's the way it works, right?
Well, no, it's a quarter. Escalating costs.
I, I, I think the outcomes are first, we don't want to have this happen year after year. We've been around this one more than once. Um. If we put the money into the capital budget, we'll settle it coming from, um, available funds, we'll settle it guys in taxation. Then we've put it in front of the voters and they can decide. And, and I have heard, uh, okay, um, sorry, I'm going on too long. Uh, I would like to hear from, um, Brenda, please.
Just turn it off.
Uh, unmute yourself. Oh. Okay. So we'll, we will come back to this in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one more time, Brenda, if you want to speak, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that.
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Chuck, along nineteen Ocean Street. Just two points, if I may. Um, there's been a lot of talk about what can be permitted and what cannot be permitted. My recollection is the last time this topic was, uh, before the Board of Select Persons. Um, I mentioned two projects, very proximate to Manchester, one in Essex, one in Beverly, where a huge revetment was permitted for Endicott College in Beverly. And the, on Kenomo Point in Essex, Essex was granted one point eight million dollars for a two million dollar project to restore the seawall where the Essex River runs out into, behind Crane's Beach. So I politely suggest that the assumption that these, this, this work is not formidable be reviewed again with open eyes and perhaps open minds, and see if there aren't other ways that we might get funding. And I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um. I had a thought, it's gone. Um. Part of what we're trying to do is to get a professional opinion from engineers who work in this area rather than relying on, um, the word, word of mouth. The word of, what, what we've been doing with word of mouth is valuable, but the reason that we're bringing this up again is that we don't want to rely on somebody's assumptions. So, yes, we hear you and we're trying to address that problem. So. When it comes up in the capital and budget, we put, we look at putting more money into it, um, and, and we're going to get this thing built. There had been some suggestion of working with the neighbors and I'm I can't imagine how that would work.
You mean financially?
Yeah, I mean financially.
I, quite frankly, I don't think it's, I don't think, A, fair to them, and B,
Yes.
um, it, it's not worth the effort. I don't mean to be glib about that, but um, the difference between, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar effort plus fifty thousand from papers versus the town doing the two fifty, right?
Yeah.
More interesting for us to do the two fifty.
Yeah, it's too much work to get the extra fifty.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I mean, I appreciate the offer. Trying to turn a gift horse of the mouth.
Okay. Um. I think we've got a direction to go on that. Um. None of it's going to make that road a main thoroughfare. But. Um. Right. Are there liaison updates?
Oxymed, Jingle Bell Block, not without a hitch. No one missed any other, uh, other entities that used to be involved with it, when, uh, basketball is, uh, up and running. I think it's, uh, oxymed in good shape. Tomorrow, uh, oxymeter that, uh, somehow reached out to the North Pole and Santa Claus will be calling a number of homes.
We missed it.
And, uh, so I think it's, uh, so oxymeter's in good shape.
Um. I assume that, that Brenda, that's muted in respect, a real hand up?
Um, yes, thank you, Ann. Brenda Furlong, nineteen Ocean Street. Um. I understand that it would take some time to, um, go forward and get this before the town meeting. Most of the problems, uh, exist in the wintertime. I'm wondering if there's any temporary solution such as temporary Jersey barriers or something else that could be, um, installed to, uh, prohibit any kind of damage during this winter.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure Chuck is still on and, and listening. Um, and he will. I'm sure he's at least as interested in preventing damage to that road as anyone sitting in this room. Maybe not as much as those of you who, who live there, but we will certainly, he, he will certainly do whatever he can to keep this winter from blowing up the road again. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um. John?
Um. No fires at the D P W. C O A, at least none more than usual. Um, I will say the library has water problems. We all know the rain that came down a couple of days ago. And that's, yeah, they had several inches in their basement, and they also have some window issues, and then there have been emails. The D P W was certainly aware of that, but that may be come a budget issue sooner rather than later, in regard to, they've been, the water handling, I think they need a bigger sump or something, because, uh, it's not keeping up with, uh, the water problem. So, um, other than that.
How is the Historic District Commission doing on the flagpole?
Uh, the Historic District Commission is okay. At the last meeting, that, that poll was voted fine. It was voted through, so that's all, that's all set.
Um, let's see, Mike and Pat, I'm not sure if I mentioned, they were engaging with, um, Chief Fitzgerald. Recommend both short and long-term changes to that crosswalk in front of Seaside One, that pedestrian accident. Um. Downtown Improvement, at our meeting, we had a couple weeks ago, we talked about the, um, wayfinding and, and, um, Downtown Improvement is going to recommend to us, um, some ways we can reduce the clutter and maybe reduce some signs that are out there. And I'm wondering what type of a target date we should give them. They asked about that. Um, is it something, just as long as it's done before the culvert project, do we feel we need it sooner? Um, are there any other? I mean, they look, I mean, they ask, it's always a good question. When you ask somebody to do something, you should give them a target date to. April fifteenth. April, good, okay. I'll give them an April date, that sounds great. They, um, also mentioned there was some, um, I guess back and forth, some confusion about what's happening with the wayfinding signs. Um, it's my understanding that, um, the D P W representative on the team was trying to communicate with the designer to get the approved designs, the designs we approved in the proper digital format, so that the sign company can do what they need to do. So the, I don't know if I saw the actual statement of work, but the statement of work that I saw said that the designer was going to produce the, the designs in a digital format. It did not specify a digital format. And so the sign company that our team is working with apparently needs, you know, a vector format. Um. And the designer was looking for, okay, well, that, I, I think there was a miscommunication there. Actually looking for additional funds to get the designs in the proper format for the sign company. So Marlene is just going to clarify, um, how much that would cost to get the designs in the format required by the sign company we, I guess, were using. Um, according to the designer, you know, other sign companies produce this format on their own. Um, so anyway, when you're requesting stuff in a digital format, the phrase digital format's not enough, but, um, I, I'm sure that'll all get worked through, but once, once this is all worked through, I think the committee that we set up should not have to worry about this. So my question, Greg, is who owns the branding? Um, cause we have, have approved some branding here, right? And, and I guess people are still coming, coming to Marlene about trail signs and other things. The committee we set up did what we asked them to do, and they should kind of be done with this. But D P W produces signs, they don't necessarily maintain the branding and stuff like that. So who in your organization is going to kind of take the the lead on ensuring that new signs have the proper branding and, and all that stuff?
So new, new town signs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'd be different.
Tiffany, okay, I don't know if, if she's been involved in this process at all, but I guess what I was communicating here is we need to, that committee did its job, we need to let them go. Let's tie up the loose ends and make sure that we have clear roles and responsibilities. Who's going to take, not only take this to the finish line, but make sure it is properly maintained on an ongoing basis, because I think other people are coming to the committee asking for help with their signs, and, and this committee's gone, right? Okay, thank you, that was it.
I, I might add as a corollary to your comment about clutter.
Yeah.
Initially, that the Historic Commission, about half these signs are in the Historic District, the other half are, are not. And with regard to the parking signs, which are at both entries to the back here, um, I know part of the branding is the posts. And we said, no new posts, whatever the park, current parking sign is on, you're just going to take that down and put the new one on with the appropriate motif in the same location. So there are no more posts than there are out there.
Yeah, right, right. Yep.
I don't really have, I missed the last planning board meeting, um, because I had something else going on, so. Yeah, I don't really have any. Yeah, I don't really have any.
But yes, the planning board, like it feels that they are perfectly capable of dealing with ADUs and, um, short-term rentals. And they've got eight other things, no, six other things. Um, that want to work on between now and town meeting, so it's going to be interesting to see them. So are those, what they're going to propose, are those intended to be in zoning bylaws or would they make a recommendation to the select board for us to include something in the general bylaws?
They would be both.
Might be both, okay. Hi. Budget preparation, asking you. They deliberately held everything level, including the amount of reserves that they put into the operating budget. And the answer came out. I, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but very, very large. So they're going the, um, school administration is going back to look. Um, as, as Mike said, their, their health insurance is up by over a million dollars. Even in a thirty-three million dollar budget, it's also big, big numbers.
We've branded, you seem to run into it every four or five years or so, you get a bit balloons and then we didn't get it this year, but um, one thing they did, I was up there the other night, they did mention that chapter seventy looks like it's going to be lower than it was last year. They're talking under two percent. Which is, insult to injury, but, uh, that's what they're planning for up there, so. I know you don't want to hear that. But, uh, yeah, that was talked about the other night up there.
Pretty much the extent of my information. Um, we have a consent agenda, which is the one. Anything that anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? So Greg, I had noted to you some, I thought some errors in the November eighteenth minutes. Yep. So I would recommend pulling that out of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the, uh, consensus again, the reception of the November eighteenth?
So moved.
Discussion. John?
Yes.
It says yes, Kathy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, what are the corrections? Um, the attendance list, it listed all of it. That was the special quick meeting we had before the meeting.
That was one paragraph.
And the attendance list, not everybody was there. And I couldn't remember. I know the three of us were here.
I was out, I was out on the floor. I was out the floor whipping boats.
So I just think we need to make the attendance correction and the voting as well. Oh, oh, um, Lisa, please unmute yourself.
Hi, Lisa Bonneville, uh, twenty-three Woodhome Road. Um, I just want to point one thing out regarding the presentation from the Longevity Bench Project. The location on Summer Street, it was, uh, reviewed Friday by DigSafe. And the location, um, it, it requires that our bench move three feet closer to the, uh, green box. Um, because of a, uh, I'm trying to find my note.
It's a, it's a utility wires in the ground.
Yes, uh, yes, um, specifically, um, a water, a water feed that, uh, came in. The, my excavator feels he can easily work around the, um, um, the orange flags. I don't know if you were able to get that additional page, but the communication and TV lines are, uh, not an issue at all. But I just wanted to, uh, clarify that we do have to move it a little closer than the my diagram shows.
Thank you. Um. I'm wondering, maybe we can just do a consensus that we are willing to approve a bench that's within ten feet of where it's supposed to be.
Uh, am I gonna, yeah. It still looks like it's the same place.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty material.
Yep.
Yeah.
It's a dominoes chest.
Yeah.
Thousand miles, so it's a pro. Okay, nice.
You're, you're fine.
Yeah.
Okay, um. I, you know, I'm like, if, if we have a motion to approve the I moved and Jeff?
Yes.
Brian, Kathy?
Yes.
Answers yes.
John, yes.
And we, uh, we
Yeah, really. It's, what I've written there is sufficient. I don't really need to elaborate unless you have a specific question. Um, just underscore that we do have our staff gathering on Wednesday, so it works in your schedule to attend. Welcome to your presence. Make sure the room presents a good holiday.
Grab bag.
So, yeah. I'll give you some judicial updates next time.
Or on Wednesday.
Yeah. I don't see many be between now and January. I think we have wonderful holiday season.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, Boxing Day.
Napping around the oak trees, painting blue.
Festive. I think I've covered everything.
Awesome.
I just had a second.
There you go.
Maybe that's past, I don't know.
A Kwanzaa is like now. Isn't Kwanzaa like the week between?
Yeah.
Oh, is that right?
Boxing Day starts it.
Boxing.
Motion, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Do we have anything to sign, Deb?
Yes, you do.
We do.
I've been practicing.
Never had a pen. Pass, make sure, pass them down after you.
Oh, this feels heavy.